Okay, it's five thirty, so I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody, for coming to the Atoma City Council meeting tonight. I'm gonna call our meeting to order. And just as a general reminder, this is another work session tonight, so there'll be no official actions taken by the council. This is for informational purposes and discussion purposes only. If everybody would rise, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Galloway, here. Councilmember Galloway, here. Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's work session. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Bussu? Yes. Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our interim finance director, Jessica Kinzer.
Okay, we are gonna try and pick up where we left off last time, kinda with two conversations, but there was one new worksheet in your packet that I just wanted to mention. You know, the tax levy does have a few different things going into it, including employee benefits. And as we've continued to work on the general fund, those numbers came down, which meant that those numbers came down in the general fund, which meant there's less tax revenue that's needed for that. So as we sit here tonight, what is different from where we were last Monday to this Monday is that we're at twenty dollars and effectively eighty-one cents for the total tax levy that's proposed, rather than twenty-one dollars. So there's twenty cents that came off by being able to adjust out sort of wages being budgeted at their maximum to what is more of the realistic view of when people get increases and things like that. So that was the change that I wanted to start with right away and just set the ground level for where we were at. And then talk about the 2024 bond projects and get into kind of any discussion, any questions that you might have there, knowing that as part of this twenty dollars and eighty cents that is right here, the entire amount that we talked about for borrowing is built into that scenario. Our financial advisor did not have any changes that he wanted to make at this time and wanted to see how the discussion will go. I will also caveat any discussion with, you know, we have an agenda to do for February sixth. Legal counsel has already gotten us the hearing proceedings to start the pre-levy process. And so it does include all of the projects at the maximum amount. That's not a bad thing. It just means that that is the authority that you would be setting for a pre-levy. Doesn't mean we'd be borrowing that. It doesn't mean anything really other than just saying this is the pre-levy authority. So, which the pre-levy is not your final determination on borrowing either. So with that, I would turn it back over to you for any questions, conversation.
I was gonna say, if you could, just for the benefit of the council members, especially the new ones, what is the benefit of issuing a pre-levy or having that pre-levy available there compared to not doing that?
Yeah, so, yes, that is a great question. So we talked last week that the debt service fund does not have any balance, any positive balance to it. If there were a positive balance and it looked like we could make a first-year principal and interest payment out of it, we would not be talking about a pre-levy at all. But when you borrow the money, there are going to be interest payments due on December first and then principal and interest due on June first of the following year. So any money that would eventually be borrowed, which right now would be on a proposed timeline to have the proceeds actually come in after July first. So we're talking about, you know, months down the road still before any action would need to be taken. There's gonna be some payments needed in the next fiscal year. And so if we don't have money to make those payments, then we're just digging ourselves a bigger hole, setting it off a year. I think the thing that's really frustrating about debt service and with the tax levy is you get like a once-a-year shot to make a change for eighteen months down the road. And that makes it really, really difficult. So we have to be very thoughtful about things right now to make sure we're making the best financial decisions.
You know, alternative to that would be you could capitalize the interest for that first year, but that just means you're paying more in interest and you're not paying anything off the principal. So you still need the money to pay the interest, but it gives you a little bit of a buffer there, not paying as much that first year. This is a much better way to do that fiscally, speaking.
Can you remind me what the total amount that we are bonding for?
Yes, it's a little hard to see on there, so I'll zoom in a little bit more. But we are looking at six point eight five four million is what everything is proposed at right now. And I think bond council would probably, with issuance fees and things, round that up to seven million dollars even.
Okay, thank you.
For two years.
For two years, yes.
That's what we're doing tonight, two-year budget, right?
One-year budget, two-year bond.
Two-year bond, okay, thank you.
Still questions? So if, okay, so we're doing a two-year bond, or we're hoping for a two-year bond. So then next year, when we look at bonding, so we're adding to, so it would be adding to the current, like, so we bond this year, then we look next year. So we're adding to the second year and then looking at a two-year bond again, right?
No, next, the idea would be unless there is something big that happens, I think there was a caveat there, that you would be not looking to borrow anything next year. That's, I just wanted that clarification too.
What is our debt-to-income ratio? Is it somewhat like you go to, same as you go to the bank and you wanna borrow money, see how much money's coming in, how much is going out?
That's a good question. That is something that I don't have the numbers for, but the way that I would phrase that and the way that it's kinda phrased in Iowa law is your legal debt capacity. And so you have, your legal debt capacity is basically five percent of your assessed valuation, so it's a pretty big number. And then you have what you actually owe, that would be for your general obligation. We have one bond that's being paid from sewer that we probably wouldn't count towards that. And so then that percent would tell you kinda where you're at, and I don't have that information, but we can get that information for you.
'Cause I'm thinking the seven million's probably not out of line for a city budget. But if I knew the debt-to-income ratio, you know, it may decide on what we may have to cut, what people are asking and what they... Because if we're getting close to that debt-to-income, then borrowing money for stuff that people want instead of what they need might have to change.
And you do bring up something that is a very valuable point to make tonight, is we can proceed with submitting a budget to the state that does have all of these projects in it and has the authority for those. We'll get to this in a little bit as we start getting into the project funds. But as I've been sort of putting numbers in for revenue and expenses, there's a few, I think, I think it's the BNSF project where it's broken out between two fiscal years. But everything else, I'm trying to kinda keep in line so that there's budgeted authority there, so you don't automatically just exceed something in the next year. But you do bring up a good point. You don't have to make any decisions on anything tonight. We can proceed with things as is, and you can always choose what you'd want to borrow for in that May-June timeframe when it comes time of we need to do this so that we can get the proceeds on hand for the start of the fiscal year.
So can we amend what you're gonna send to the state if we choose to go one direction or the other?
Yeah, so what I would say is every time you do a budget amendment, it's, there's time and there's cost involved. It is not easy to do with the financial software that we have right now, because it's basically like submitting your budget over again effectively. And so we would be doing a budget amendment, I would imagine, next year at this time as part of the fiscal year twenty-six process, where if there was something that didn't get borrowed for, you would remove it from the budget at that point.
Okay. Do you know offhand what the city's bond rating is at this time?
I don't. I do know when we talked last that it has been a few years since a bond rating was sought for this debt, because it's doing, last, the 2022 bond was a private placement where there was not a need to go through Moody's to do a formal bond rating.
Well, is it still needed? Because I guess we were at the League of Cities and they were talking about bond ratings and the benefits and the, I think today, the not benefits.
The cons, yes.
And that's one of the things where you have like Tim Oswal to give us advice on, because depending on the amount of issue, if we think we're in a good bond, a good rating versus not, it can play into what your interest is and what you expect with that. So we would seek advice from the financial advisor, do we wanna do that? There may be, if it's a, depending on the size, a bank issue may be a better way to go than, you know, bond issues. So there's different things, and they give us all that advice and why the best route is when we're looking to issue.
And to clarify, for our county people, Tim Oswal?
Oh, I'm sorry. He is, we'll be meeting him in the very near future. He is from Piper Sandler, is it Piper Sandler still?
Piper Sandler, yeah.
Piper Sandler. He is the financial advisor that the city has used for bond issue and for sewer rates and looking at different things on a financial side.
We don't have to be the experts. You can hire experts to handle the bond stuff and some of the rate analysis things.
Thank you. I do think it's important to just remind the council too, 'cause I think Phil talked about this last week. The department has, I think, really tried to be very conservative in their asking this next year for projects. They could've probably put a whole bunch more projects on the table, but I think they tried to be extremely conservative what they were gonna ask for. And I applaud them for that, because I think they're very keenly aware of the dollar amount and the impact it has overall on the city's budget. So I just think they tried really hard to come up with a fairly conservative asking this year.
I would agree. You know, as we reviewed the list, there wasn't anything on there that it was like, well, this seems unnecessary or unneeded. Let's cut it from the administration review, so. If you would like, we can proceed with February sixth and kinda the rest of the budget process with the list as is. I think as we work with Tim, I believe I might have a revised timeline in my inbox that we'll wanna just double-check and make sure, and we can talk about that probably on February sixth about if, for whatever bond amount you do ultimately wanna issue, when is the time that you really need to start making those decisions? Because there's probably a discussion before that really needs to start. So we will, we will work on that if there's no other discussion or questions. Okay, now we are gonna get into the three hundred funds, which are capital funds. And the, the thing that I'm gonna do is kinda have a multiple screens up here with what I am calling some very important information that I put at the end of each item. Sometimes we talk about fund balance, and with this, I wanted to focus mostly on cash balance with all of these funds, because cash is what we're concerned about as we're talking about projects, is what do we have to be able to fund some different projects? So we're gonna start with Fund 301, which is our street capital projects. And Philip has a number of projects that he can talk about. And then over here on this screen, I'll make it a little bit larger for you, is kind of where Fund 301 was at the end of 2023 and where we are projecting it in 2024 and into 2025.
I'm just gonna go through kinda the list of all the streets here and explain where we're at with each of them. Not all these street projects will be built in twenty-five, but some have engineering costs or design costs that will be incurred this year. So the first one, just wanna go through your list. I'm gonna turn up my page two here. Are you guys gonna follow along on this or?
This is in the old PowerPoint from last week.
If you wanna scroll up on the Excel spreadsheet, you guys know what I'm looking at right now. I thought everybody had this handout.
Um, I believe the Excel spreadsheets were part of last time's packet too.
Yeah. If they're not all numbered in order, there's... Page one. There's no, there's no bigger page numbers on there. This is... It's after the police bond. You scroll through, there you see a PowerPoint for the police bond. And then there is the bond for the levy project. That was the last thing we talked about last time. And then after that, there's a, there's a little bit on sidewalk and curve. After that PowerPoint, you'll get to some printed-out spreadsheets.
You can tell me where to scroll to on this, Michael?
Yeah, I just scroll up to the top. So the first one is the Black Hawk Bridge Road. That was just, that was money that was spent on a study for the overpass on, over Quincy. An overpass over the railroad tracks at Quincy and Black Hawk, so that's old. If you scroll down to the next one, again, Milner Street Construction, that closed out. Eisenhower Bridge closed out. Altavista's closed out. Just wanna explain to you why I'm skipping all these. Those are heads of money, but it's all been closed out. So the first one is a future project, is Mary Street. This is under design now. It's STVG money, which is a... It's a, so Area 15, we get money every year allocated based on our population, and we have to use it on arterial streets. And this was, I think, 2023, early 23 is when this started going to design. And we have it programmed to start next year, and so we're doing the check plans right now. So you see the 2024 amended, that has a little bit of money in it to finish out the design. And also when we start construction, or that's 125,000 to finish out design. It's also to acquire some property, 'cause we're adding a turning lane as part of that project. And so the 125,024 is for that. The department column, their column G, that's 2025. So we'll plan to let it this fall for construction in the spring. So we figured of the, about three, I don't remember if I ran down here, but 3.4 million is about what we think the construction's gonna cost. This over three, about 1.5 will be incurred in FY25 before July first. So that's just the portion of that. I tried to be pretty conservative on how much will be built in twenty-five. Probably won't be quite 1.5 million, but sometimes you get a warm, dry spring and get a lot done by July first. So I wanted to kinda be a little bit conservative on these asks when it's splitting them up between, between years.
Isn't that the turning lane you talked about gonna be into Liberty School? What are they doing sidewalks too?
We're doing sidewalks. We actually flew a drone over there, 'cause the traffic was terrible this fall. And we actually tracked where all the backups were. There are no backups getting into the school or out of the school at the driveway. The only backups for Liberty were right at Ferry Street. So we actually redesigned, after they came to us with turning lanes at the entrance of Traxler. We switched it to have a, we met with the school too and kinda went over what our plan was and how we planned on changing this and showed it to them. They're on board with it too, but yeah, the turning lane is gonna go at Ferry Street. So it'll be a turning left onto Ferry Street from when they're leaving the school. We had backups from there all the way to the parking lot in the school. And, yeah, so, anyway, so that was the property acquisition, 125,000 dollars for FY24 is for property acquisition and costs associated with that. Again, that's pretty conservative there. It's not gonna cost nearly that much, but I don't know what the price of your contract is for prices yet, so. And like I said, there was a little bit of money there to finish out the design, and we're on the check plan stage right now.
So next year is the design, and then following in twenty-five will be the actual?
Yes, we're at the check plan stage now, which is like about eighty percent complete. We'll finish that up, then we have to acquire the easements and the property, and then we can send it to the DOT, then we approve the final plans.
Okay.
And we're hoping to get that done by this fall, let it this fall for a spring construction starting. And we have the money programmed, like, we have 2.9 million programmed in the STVG for next year. And that's just, it'll pay for it up to that point. There's no match, it's just they'll pay the first 2.9 million and the rest of it's on us, but whatever the big one's back is.
Thank you.
After Mary Street is Minnesota Street. I just have $5,000 in here each year for design work. When we get some spare time, we have a list of streets that we work on. So you'll have money for someone to go out there and get a shot on a manhole or someone to go camera the sewers or do some little, some CAD work on it. And it's not programmed for FY25, it's just money in the budget. So if we spend money on design, we have it in there, it's not being pulled out of a general fund.
If it's not used, it just stays in general, right?
Yeah, if it's not used, it just stays there.
Okay.
And I don't, are you gonna talk about switching to general insurance stuff later? Okay.
Probably, yes.
Okay. Next one's Washington Street. This one's about ninety percent designed. We do have money in it for FY25. That would be let next spring. It's a small project. It'll probably get done within a couple, two or three months. So that 391 is the full construction cost of it. And then the $15,000 for salaries and wages is for inspection. About five percent for inspection-ish on a Pawnee Drive. That one is done. It's a completed project. There's just a few, a little bit of spending in FY24, that's why it's still on there. Webster Street, that's the same as Minnesota. Money in there for design work, so we can keep working on it when we have some free time. We have rain days or something like that, we can send someone to work on it. But again, no, it's not programmed for FY24 or 25.
So what type of work are we doing on it, or might be doing on it?
Design work, just the design work. Same thing, CAD work, surveying, cameraing sewers, stuff like that.
Thank you.
Lake Road, this is the big one. It's like eight thousand feet long, it's one of the longest, it's the longest street we've ever done since I've been here. Longest continuous stretch of street. We did some overlays on it two years ago, trying to get us by, inmates are driven on Lake Road.
Every day.
So before we overlaid it, it was almost impassable. I mean, there was potholes, the two had to go in the oncoming lane, up the hill, the wrong direction to get around. And just asking for head-on collision. So we took the worst of the areas, milled them off, spent about 150 grand to get us by for a couple more years to give us time to program a project that big. But that's by far the biggest spend, and we have the design started. We wanna finish it here in the next few months, get it let, and hopefully get it constructed this summer.
Does that, design include widening or anything?
No, we can't widen that road. It was actually widened, when they overlaid it in 2009, there was the stimulus money for the financial crisis. That's when it got overlaid. And it did not last. They tried widening the road, and it's a lot of failures along the edge. There's no, there's no roadbed left. I'm actually thinking about narrowing it up, just keep the edge of the road away from, away from the edge of the ditch. But we're gonna definitely thicken the road up and make it a lot more durable. There's a lot more truck traffic on there and semi-traffic than anyone, I think, anticipated, no way, when they, when they let that project to overlay it then.
So the eight thousand, the eight thousand feet is what the city also turns into county, right?
Yeah, the county redid theirs, and I had some, heard some horror stories about that. They came in wanting to just mill and fill, and ended up having to like tear the whole road out, put sub-bays down. And I think they, about the double, what they thought they were gonna spend on it, so. And you know what we're getting into if we, when we take it out. We had some borings along there too, so we had a company come down and drilled a boring, over a thousand feet or so, we found out what went under the road. So we got a pretty good idea of what we need to do to make it last more than fifteen years of time.
So if you narrow it and still, is that gonna make it unsafe for travelers, especially if we have some...
No, it'll still be eleven feet wide, eleven-foot lanes.
It doesn't affect pluggs, semi, or doesn't affect fire trucks or anything when you narrow it?
No, there's a lot of partner motor roads that have eleven-foot lanes.
Gotcha.
And there's a lot of four-lanes that have twelve-foot lanes, so I mean, you know, it'll be probably not even noticeable.
Probably not look forward to a walk bath out there anytime soon.
Probably not. So Lake Road, that's the big one, and that was programmed for this, hope of construction this, this late summer, if we can fit it in. Still intend to do that. I'll be at Quincy Roundabout. You're gonna have about six property acquisitions and easements coming in front of you the next couple council meetings, or the twentieth, the council meeting from now, on February 20th. And once we get all those easements and property acquisitions done for the roundabout, we've had the design done for over a year. So that'll be constructed this spring as well. The roundabout is $500,000 worth of matching funds that we got from the safe city, or so safety funds, CSIB money. So the first half million dollars is paid for by that, and we'll, we'll match the remainder with the CSIB about, probably less than a hundred grand all together for the construction cost, and some engineering and design on top, or engineering and inspection on top of that.
Can I stop you for a second, just to ask, are there any more roundabouts in the conversation anyplace? I've had a roundabout, so I'm just...
I would like to see more roundabouts.
Well, the DOT has a conceptual plan for Highway 34 that has been publicized before. It's not in the five-year plan to build. They just put it in front of the public a while back. I have not heard anything about, yes, we're gonna do this, no, we're not gonna do this. It's just, it's still out there.
The earliest they could be put in there, five-year plan will be the next one in 2029, right?
I think so. So it's not like it's gonna be done anytime soon.
It might be put in that next five years. And there was also some, some conversation about one over by the Church Street Event Center area, if they took that...
Four Corners?
It was part of the 34 project.
Yeah, that's the 34, yeah. That's that same, that was 34. When roundabouts are put in historically, does it that reduce accidents?
It does.
Or it reduces the severity of accidents?
Yeah, not certainly the number, but the severity, yes, 'cause you're merging instead of head-on.
The difference with the proposed roundabouts that DOT is proposing was it'd be two-lane roundabouts, not just single-lane, it'd be two-lane roundabouts.
I like roundabouts, especially, I'm still not quite sold on the DOT's plan there. There's some... But that's not, that's five years from now, so we don't have to talk about that.
We put on an instructional movie, how to approach and exit a roundabout.
Yeah.
With some courtesy built in.
Travis.
Then, don't you think though, since we're on that topic, your opinion, whether someone put a roundabout somewhere or not, most accidents are because people ain't doing what they're supposed to do.
Yes, yeah.
That's why the word roundabout even started, because people did what they weren't supposed to do.
And depending on the situation, they can improve traffic quite a bit. Like the five corners, I think, are perfect for one, but it got reconstructed during store separation, so I don't wanna tear up a new road.
And besides that, it works, it's the way it is.
Yeah.
Well, I was almost keep on here, on my way here today.
That's a matter of privacy.
We can talk about Cooper Street now if you want to.
Moving on, Cooper.
Cooper Street was finished last year, so that's had some money in late FY24, but it's done now. Somehow it got rolled over to the 24, but I don't know why, but that's why it showed up here. Marion Street, done. Ward Street Bridge is done. This Milner Street, Porterfield to Hand, so we got Milner Street done north of Mary Street. We got Milner Street done for like two blocks south to the drainage ditch. This will rebuild the section from the drainage ditch to Hand and narrow that street up. It's really wide, I guess there must've been businesses there at one time. I'm not sure why it's 35 or 40 feet wide, but we're gonna narrow it down to a normal two-lane street. Repave it, separate the sewer there, bring all the storm sewer into the drainage ditch. Little new sidewalk. The waterworks have already replaced the water main there, brought it up under the road. So that one's under design now.
That's about a four-block length, took down to Hand from the bridge.
The blocks are weird down there.
Yeah.
I'd say two or three blocks probably.
Okay.
That's under design. It'll probably have some work done before July 1, and the rest will be done. So there's money in there for 2024 and 2025. Elm Street has already been let. And then the same thing with, Fellows, Elm and Fellows were let last fall, we got really good prices on those, I was pretty pleased with the, the prices, hopefully that continues this spring, but, and again, both of those have money in there for inspection, you'll see on money under regular wage, regular salary and wages, that's for inspection. Then the last little group of projects there, I have money, so Grace, Allison, and Minio, but they're all, I buy Maori between Quincy and Wildwood, those streets are really, really bad shape. The bunny in there is like a placeholder for design work, engineering work, surveys. Possibly beginning construction next spring, but not all of them start first thing in the spring, we start three projects right at once, right next to each other, so rather than trying to guess which one got built first, I just put a percentage of all the projects in there, so whichever one does get started first, we'll have money in the budget for it. And then that Helgerson class road improvements, GoPib is applying for a RISE grant, and that would be our twenty percent share of it, and that project would extend Fox Off Road to the east, out to Angle Road to give a back way from the four-lane to the, to the industrial park.
Do you know when we'll find out about the RISE grant?
It is due within a couple weeks from now, it has to do early, I don't know when we're here, the answer on that, whether we got it or not. It's tied to jobs though, so it kinda got me curious about what jobs are gonna be tied to, I have not heard, so. And with that, money's in that, because if it does get done, it'll have to be, you'll have to have a percent match for it, so.
Yeah, and the reason they had Helgerson flats highlighted was because originally, the BNSF levy project appeared in the street projects, and so I put it on there, and then Phillip corrected me and said, no, that is actually what is already proposed in Fund Three Thir, Three Eleven?
Three Eleven, Eleven, thirteen, I remember.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna talk about that separately, so that actually changed the financial picture. The main funding sources in here are a transfer in from local option sales tax, which we'll be talking about in the near future, not tonight. There's a very healthy fund balance there, after years of the ninety percent that's supposed to go towards street and sewers, just kind of accumulating and not being spent, so as you can see, we've got more coming in, in revenues in FY twenty-four than might be necessary, but that becomes necessary in FY twenty-five, as we're really looking at a seven million dollar street budget, which is a significant project load for the engineering department to take on, but also, I think, a really good achievement that you can cash finance seven million dollars worth of street repairs in a fiscal year. And of course, everything with construction, you know, fiscal years are not construction seasons, and so we put a dividing line in the middle, and then we just see where things end up at, and then work things out as the next year's budget comes along and revise things. So that is Fund Three Oh One, are there any questions on Fund Three Oh One? If not, we will go to Fund Three Oh Three, which is the Airport Capital, and with that, we do have JD here to talk about the two projects that they have going on, and then I will get down here to the bottom portion to again, kind of focus on that, that cash portion of things.
All right, so the two projects we're gonna turn on doing here is a T-hanger expansion, six aircraft. We currently have a six-unit T-hanger now and a three-unit box hanger, plus a community hanger that has just a lot of airplanes in one. The others are all separated by wall, so it's kinda like having your own private hanger yet.
Was that the same hanger that's got Musco items?
That's, that's connected to what we call the big hanger, the, the community hanger is paired up with them. This would be a hanger that's behind it to the east, there's a six-unit T-hanger back there now, and we're gonna expand off the end of that towards the road with six more units.
Okay.
For the size of airport we have and everything we have going on, I mean, you can go to small towns of Albia that have more hangar space for private hangars than we do, and the little airport in Oskaloos is the same way, we was, we built some hangars about fifteen years ago, and they've been full the whole time, and we've got a waiting list now, they were built today, they'd be full tomorrow, so.
When John Travels had, was alive, he had permission to build his own hanger on the apron or front part of the airport down there, and he had his own turbo, or his own jet.
Right.
Located in, is that still his property or?
That is, he owns up to three foot outside the door of his hanger is his, and in front of there on out is ours.
So you better not let the nose hang out anytime soon.
They, they flew out today, they flew out yesterday, they flew out again today, they've been pretty busy themselves, but we also, go ahead.
I was gonna say, what do you charge for rent on it?
A T-hanger is a hundred dollars a month, and the, the, the T-hanger and the box, the box hangars are one fifty, the T-hangers are a hundred. And the community barn hangars, we call it, for just a small signal engine aircraft, is eighty-five dollars a month. But like, we get, you know, we've had contracts, and it's not really a contract, but we've had jets in the past that stay there all the time in our base hangar, and that's a five hundred, five hundred dollars a month, right now, we have a crop duster, a guy who owns two crop dusters, he's based out of Washington. His hanger's big enough to put both of them in, but he can't do maintenance on either one of them if they're both in there, so. He brought one to us early January, he's paid through the end of April already, and he says he'll be over to swap it out with the other one. And so it's just, every year, it seems like we have somebody that comes and does that, you know?
What size aircraft will fit in a T-hanger?
The doors are forty-two foot wide.
Okay.
So just about any single-engine, smaller single-engine, like six, six passengers.
Eighty-two, yeah, okay.
All that, and we have one eighty-two's in there now, so, I mean, we have one guy that's got some small tow-dragger aircraft, and he actually has two of them in one T-hanger, the way he can, they're a puzzle within there, so they're so small that they do fit in, so.
Thank you.
But the other project that we're gonna do is, anybody else got any other questions about T-hangers? The other project that we wanna do is a pavement project. This part of the pavement, there's only one score worse than this score as far as our pavement around these areas, and I mean, the pavement's in bad, bad shape for the asphalt on top of it. And in the past, every year, we do an apron project through the state, this go-around, we're actually gonna use funding from the state for our T-hangers, and we got federal money for the pavement project this year, it's like a one point six, six-nine million dollar project. That one, we pay ten percent of. So the other project that, they'll give us up to three hundred thousand for the T-hangers, no more than fifty-five percent. But we had some other funding that was available to help offset that local cost to us on that. But as far as the pavement project goes, we're gonna try to do it first, because it's gonna help lower the cost of this T-hanger, for the fact is, we don't have to pay for new concrete, we have a T-hanger, and then come in and do pavement around it. So we're gonna do the pavement first, and then build the T-hanger on top of that new pavement, and prep for that as we do it, so.
That makes great sense.
So that way there, that does save a spot a bit in our local match as far as how that works out.
And, and what's the size of that T-hanger, how many units?
Six.
Okay.
And we're planning to not get to the current T-hanger that we currently have, so we'll all be in one of them. It'll fit back there real nice.
JD, for those watching at home, how are we coming up with this, or how, what's proposed?
I can cover that one. So as, as JD mentioned, we really have like two point eight million dollars in, in projects that would be happening. We've got them all programmed in fiscal year twenty-five, knowing that, I don't think they'll both be done by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and so that'll be a, next year, you amend it to kind of where the project is at. One of the things, as we looked at this fund, there is a starting balance of four hundred eleven, almost four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and then there's some additional payment, one additional payment coming in here soon to close out one of the prior projects. And as we started digging into some of that, the best guess that we have is that the two projects that have recently closed out were, I think I found that it was in like fiscal year twenty, the city had borrowed about one point two million, what happened in twenty twenty? Covid, the FAA then made some different arrangements on existing projects to keep those going, to put some more federal dollars into them, which meant that your local contribution went down. So as we've been getting, getting these final reimbursements from the FAA for their share of these, the runway four twenty-two and runway thirteen thirty-one, as those have been finished, we've ended up with this money just sitting there that was reimbursed to us for our costs. So fortunately, it comes very close to covering that with, with what we need with some additional revenues for interest income and other things, where, you know, we're projecting a year-end balance, if everything were to happen in all next fiscal year, that we still would possibly have three thousand four hundred dollars in that fund. So this was originally on the borrowing list, and then as we looked at it closer, we realized with what we really need to provide as a local contribution, we don't need to put this on the borrowing list, we actually have the money that is there. So positive, positive change on this one.
The ending balance of six twenty-three, the four hundred and eleven million, is that, is that a correct balance?
Four hundred and eleven thousand, yes, that, yeah, that is a, that is a correct balance, yep.
Okay, 'cause I thought I heard you say there was something else coming in or coming out of that.
There, there is, yeah, so there's, I think Sarah just did the drawdown of this nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the runway four twenty-two, so we should have that in our account, if we didn't get it in January, sometime in February, so that will be coming in. As well as then, we've just done some interest allocation, so I believe there's, there might be some interest revenue as part of this too, yep. So, because when you have a balance sitting there, it's earning interest as we get interest into the city too. So that just helps provide some extra wiggle room on, on some of these projects, because I think we all know nothing happens as you project it to happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Fund Three Oh Three, the Airport Capital Fund? Okay.
One more question, do you have a list of people that want into that new hanger?
We don't have an official list, but if we said tomorrow we've got six hangars.
I'd probably get them rented.
As soon as they could get them in there.
Okay, good.
And the good thing about doing this, not to hold you up anymore, but, you know, people say, why do you want T-hangers? Well, we also want some new income, you know, coming in, so our existing customers, they might take those, well, then that opens up room in our hanger, and every time it opens up room.
Scott, you wanna walk in the seat? Walk out there.
Another thing besides the rental income is, is then we get maintenance and, and, that's, that's what we're after, so.
Okay, the next fund is Fund Three Oh Seven, the Sidewalk Drop Fund, which the preview before Phillip says anything is a very similar situation where we've got some fund balance there that we'll be utilizing to support project funds.
So Fund Three Oh Seven, this is the fund we use to do the sidewalk drops around town, so you own the sidewalk in front of your house or part of your property, but the city is taking on responsibility to maintain the curb ramps and the, the drops where it meets the road. And we've gone through the entire south side, everywhere that we've had store separation done, we've gone through and any, where we needed the detectable warning, which is what ADA requires now, we've done it, this is the money left over in that fund. And we have database of thousands of sidewalk drops, but we missed some on Church Street. I guess we just assumed they were done, because that project was built not that long ago. But after some meetings with the Church Street Business District, we realized there are no crosswalks, no sidewalk, no sidewalk drops anywhere from the four-way stop by Bardell all the way to the Five Corners. So the project for this year will be to add handicap accessible crosswalks across every, and we're required to do this. The ADA law requires us to have an accessible way, anywhere a sidewalk meets a street, and there's a sidewalk on their side, we need to provide a way across there, and we don't right now. So that sixty-five thousand, our project will be to build those crosswalks across each of the intersections. And the reason it's so high is that we have stamped crosswalks parallel to Church Street, across each of those streets, like Ransom and Ward, all those streets have stamped crosswalks, the Five Corners has brick stamped crosswalks there, we have a stamped crosswalk that was put in by Bridgeview Center, so we thought all these could have brick stamped crosswalks in Church Street as well to make it match, add to the cost significantly, but it kind of brighten up the business district and also will match the rest of the crosswalks in the area.
Is these stamped sidewalk, crosswalk as efficient and will last as long as any concrete sidewalk?
Yeah, well, the stamped part will go across the street itself, and that stamped part will last, yeah, it'll, it'll last as long as the rest of the street does.
Okay, one time I was, heard somebody talking about, in the wintertime, snow, plowing, fog goes over that and can damage it, is that?
It'll wear off, like the stamping only goes maybe an eighth of an inch deep, and then over time, it'll wear out smoothly. You can look at like, at the bottom of Rejection Street Bridge, if you leave going that way, they have stamped crosswalks there too, you can kinda see how they wear off over time, but it lasts a lot longer than paint does.
Oh, interesting.
So, like I said, it's not like it's cheaper than paint, it's partially aesthetic, it's not, and it just to make it, it's aesthetic. But I wanted to match the rest of the corridor, so that's why I proposed a little bit more expensive project there.
Okay.
Okay, like I said, the plan is to utilize the fund balance for that one, so we should be in a good position where there's still be some funds remaining, so.
So if the cost is more, or?
Yeah, just doing the drop sort of thing, a lot less than sixty-five.
So we're on to the next fund, which is the Parks Project Fund, and that one, I'm gonna show you, we, and I'll, I'll explain why too. We present this one a little bit differently, because kind of the, the number of projects where we've been attempting to do some project accounting and keeping track of balances of projects, and one of the things that finance staff still needs to do is to work with Gene to go through these and figure out kind of where we, where we are on a lot of these, so I'll just kind of give you kind of a, a big level sort of review here as, and then we'll get to kind of what the, the new projects are, and have Gene talk about those. So zero, zero is no project, this tends to be a revenue account where we're accounting for interest or, or other things that are just coming into the fund generally, that tends to happen kind of with, with bond proceeds as well. Seven hundred was pickleball court, we're not proposing any activity there. Seven hundred and twenty was beach improvements, and this had some bond proceeds from the twenty twenty-two bond that as we talked about, there wasn't a specific project for those to go along with, so we are proposing in this current year reallocating those to, I think it's down here a little bit further? Maybe it's not, we were proposing reallocating those to, I think it was the tennis court project, which had some design costs that were not covered by the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was originally borrowed for that. Seven hundred thousand has been paid out for that, so we were trying to move some money around between projects in the fund to balance some of these projects out where there were larger overruns, there's a trail.
Sorry, let's go back to beach improvements.
Yes.
There's nothing, okay, so I understand that this hasn't been used or whatever, but I guess my question is, and maybe that's in the beach one and two phase, but didn't we get into a problem where we had to spend some, like a million or something? Where's Gene? Sorry, a million or something money because we weren't doing improvements consistently? So if we're, so if we move that, there's nothing that needs to be improved? I guess that's my question.
There's a difference between maintenance and improvements. This, this wasn't talking about maintenance of infrastructure that's currently there, this was, I, I'm thinking if it was designing, I don't know, floating lazy river, or if it was doing something like that, that's what that was probably towards, but we don't have that on the horizon for any specific project, we're not sure exactly why that was put in on the last bonding, from, from conversation, so. But that would be like that kind of improvement, not talking about maintenance, I mean, there was maintenance of the pumps and the wave, um, wave pool and things like that, that was still done.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I don't want us to get to a point where we're having to be like, we need to spend one point five million dollars or we're never gonna, not gonna be able to have the beach open anymore.
This would be like new features.
But it could not go towards improvements? Or towards?
No, the improvements would be like new features, we have a budget for maintenance and operations and, and those things.
So like building a swimming pool, so people stop going to like Albia or Bloomfield, because they just wanna swim, and we don't have like an apple or something?
That could be an improvement.
And one thing to just note about bond proceeds is that you generally wanna have at least seventy percent, I think it's like seventy-five percent of what you borrowed spent within three years, and so we're at that point in fiscal year twenty twenty-five where it's that three-year mark, and we need to get these bond proceeds spent. You know, these are earning interest at a higher rate of interest, we'll have to do arbitrage. earning interest at a higher rate of interest. We'll have to do arbitrage calculations with the IRS where they look at all interest that's been earned on bond proceeds and determine if, you know, we owe the IRS money because we made money off of bond proceeds, you know, that the interest rate we earned is less or is greater than what the interest we paid on them. So, uh, so we're at a time period where we have to think about that stuff too. So we're trying to get some things spent and taken care of.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Um, and then another project, Trail Underpass, not an active project in the current fiscal year or next fiscal year. Greater Atoma Master Plan is one that has a deficit. We've got some money coming in from another project as we kind of reallocate some funds moving around to get that balance down. And this is one that I think we'll be talking about potentially a little bit later with how we, how we propose getting this balance down. But between two weeks and having stuff out for the, these funds two weeks ago and then the next week, we're able to do some work and provide some solutions. That will come in with the ARPA conversation. ADA Complaints restroom, no activity. The pond fill-in was one that also I think had some bond proceeds from an even older bond that needed to be taken care of. And so there's thirty-eight hundred dollars worth of work that Phillip has identified a contractor to complete. So that left quite a significant number of bond proceeds be allocated out. A hundred and sixty-two went to the shower house and campground parking lot, which we've just combined together because it was getting too hard in the financial system to keep them separate. And then revenues too were kind of supporting both projects at the same time. And so there's some transfers in there of ARPA funds as well as utilizing other bond proceeds to really get those two projects in a completed phase where everything is taken care of. Uh, replace toilets at Greater Atoma Park is not an active project in twenty-four or twenty-five. The climbing rock is also not active in twenty-four, twenty-five. As I mentioned, the shower house camp and campground parking lot basically closed out and I think the, the shower house was done in fiscal year twenty-three. And then the parking lot, if it hasn't been accepted yet, I think it'll be accepted sometime in the spring.
That entire project is finished.
Okay, yeah. So I just know the shower house was one that was a capital asset that we added in FY twenty-three. The indoor sports, this is seven hundred thousand dollars of bond proceeds and I'm happy to report that Phil presented an invoice today. We coded it and I believe it will be on the next council claims list for approval. So those will be bond funds that will be out the door and off to work. The tennis court project, as I, as I mentioned, there was a deficit related to design fees that were not part of that original or were planned to be part of that original seven hundred and fifty thousand. But that whole project took a kind of a different turn. And so the payment of seven hundred thousand dollars, it comes under seven seventy, but that payment did happen this current year to the Atoma School District as well.
So I have a question on that. So we have, so we allocated as a council up to what? Seven fifty? Up to seven hundred? Correct?
Originally, seven fifty was bonded towards.
Okay, so up to seven fifty. So my question is, um, yes, we have these tennis courts, but we've already spent a hundred and six thousand? Is that correct?
I, I think it, there was a little bit of a carry, or this final payment.
Okay.
Here, so it ends up being a hundred and eight thousand.
Okay, so a hundred and eight. But yet over here, we still have seven hundred thousand? Am I?
Seven hundred thousand went out to the school district.
But for the total project, we said up to seven fifty.
Initially, it was up to seven fifty. That's when it was in, uh, Sycamore Park.
On city property.
When it moved from city property, then the threshold was lowered to seven hundred thousand. So seven hundred thousand was the most that we paid.
Okay, so seven hundred that we could give.
Right.
For the project, for the, but, so we're not subtracting, I guess, I, we're not subtracting that hundred and eight thousand from that total because we've already paid it, even though, I mean, the, the school was active in that, the school district was active in that conversation. And so now that we moved it, yes, we reduced it fifty thousand because of what we could give because of where it was moved. But why aren't we subtracting that hundred and eight thousand from that?
They had, well, they.
Because we said toward the tennis project, correct?
Yep. Then, and that work unfortunately isn't any part of the work they did for design where tennis courts will be now. So it's not part of.
That was the only working work that the city did when it was going to be over by the beach.
Yes, I understand that. Completely understand that.
That was design bidding for the project.
I, I agree with Kara. That hundred and eight thousand dollars should be given back because for the project, it was up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Up to. The school system decided to move it. We didn't go to them and say, why don't we put it on school property? They came to us, they wanted to, knowing or should have known, that makes our number fifty thousand less.
I'd actually agree with that too. I mean, why, it's almost like paying for nothing. So, I mean, you know, we're not getting it.
Well, that unfortunately is part of what happened when the project got moved is that work was still done and they had agreed towards a third of construction, not necessarily the design.
Well, and I think that was actually one of my points that I made pretty clear that I was very nervous about agreeing to that hundred and eight and us paying it upfront because what happens if they decide, like someone, or not they, not the school, but in general, one of the groups says, oh, I don't have the money, then we're fronting on the money upfront. So I guess that's just my, I mean, I guess, my concern is, I foreshadowed what was going to happen, I guess.
Right, yeah, you did. And I remember that meeting too and I don't have a very good memory. But I think what we should do then is that hundred and eight thousand take away from the seven hundred and they get, which you already gave them the check. But somewhere along the line, we shouldn't be tagged for that hundred and eight thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand or seven hundred thousand.
Right, because it's just wasted money.
It's a waste of money.
Okay, well, that is probably a discussion for another meeting.
Yeah, I'm bringing it to you now because I think I might have brought it to someone. I don't know. Just to concern me.
I guess I would add one thing to it and this comes from, even though I still think the best location for those courts is in a city park at Sycamore Park. But there is more value, assuming every promise is kept and the courts are made open to the public except during practice time. We're getting a better deal at seven hundred thousand dollars for those courts because we don't have to maintain them in perpetuity. So for an investment of eight hundred thousand, we're getting them to buy, build courts that are available to the public and we never have to maintain. Whereas for seven hundred and fifty thousand, we were going to have to build and maintain courts in perpetuity. So there is net, net.
Or second staff time, that's what it seems to do.
A little bit better. A little bit better value, net, net, assuming the project, you know, completely pans out the way it should.
Plus concession stands, plus restrooms.
Yeah.
Can we have it in contract too that it would be?
We don't have a contract currently.
But we will have it in contract, right?
That would be included.
Thank you.
That would be included, but also personally Kara said that we would have the, we said the courts.
That was, yes, that was what was stated for all of that. Well, I don't know about the restrooms and concessions, but the courts. I'm just, I'm just trying to say what Zach said. You also have to include the restrooms and the concessions that go top of the tennis courts, that the city would have to maintain all that if it was on city property. I'm just asking to what he was trying to say. So the city saved the money by not having to run concession stands and take care of public restrooms. But that's all going to be part of that tennis court project.
Yeah.
Now to get on to the fund stuff, which is the new projects that will be in Fund 309 for, um, at fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, uh, the soccer complex project will be three full-size fields in the northwest quadrant of Atoma Park, also known as Central Edition Park. And it's being funded by the Atoma Regional Legacy Foundation. The council has approved the bids and they also received two grants recently for fifty thousand dollars each to help fund the project. The city will be acting as the fiscal agent. So basically the project will be a pass-through because it's not appropriate for legacy to hire a contractor and pay a contractor themselves in this situation. So they're going to start that in March. It's going to be a two-year project. Then the playground equipment project.
Two, two years to complete?
Two full years to complete, yes. Should be completed in the fall of twenty-five. And then it'll take another year for the turf to heal before we can open it to the public. The playground equipment project, the Parks Foundation received a thirty thousand dollar grant, new playground equipment for Atoma Park. It's a small project, but it's a free project, no city money involved. So we'll do that project this summer.
Where the money is coming from for that?
It's a legacy grant, right ideas program. Yeah.
Has it ever let playground equipment go?
It's going to be in Atoma Park, very close to where the old fun barrel used to be.
Is it replacing any of?
Oh, yeah.
In order to make room for it, we're going to take out one of the old set of swings that doesn't get used very much and is no longer safe. So. And then the Expo Trail Phase One project is a project that the Waplo County Trails Council has been working on for several years. They recently got a grant for around ninety thousand dollars for that project. Once again, the city will be acting as the fiscal agent. They provide the funding. We just pay the bills. That project will involve constructing a new trail in Phase One from where Stewart's Coffee is by the roundabout going north up to connect to the trail on Atoma Park. And then the tennis court lighting project, we talked about that last week, is just replacing some of the existing fifteen hundred watt metal haline bulbs in, in the tennis courts at Trigger Park and the basketball courts in Atoma Park with brand-new LED lights so we can get a few more years out of those courts and make them safe.
Gene, wasn't that ninety thousand dollar grant they got was that a Walmart Foundation grant?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
From the Expo Trails. They applied for.
That was a refund. How long you got a refund?
Because they also applied for Walmart Foundation too.
Yeah, and they may have gotten that. Haven't been to like a couple trail makers with that house.
So that, along the end of the, um, lagoon.
Yes.
Up to the trail where the trail is.
All that works in bar, department has already created a shelf for a, a bed for the trail to be laid upon when it's built.
Can I, can I go back to one thing? Are the tennis courts at the high school, is, are those lit courts?
They will be.
They will be.
Yeah.
Pretty much where the pit is.
And lighted parking.
Right, so just so understand they'd be lit courts, open to the public. They would maintain everything.
Okay.
And pay for the lighting.
Right, right. That's, so I, yeah, I.
But when, when are the schools tennis courts supposed to be finished?
When, uh.
I think that project's being let right now.
It's unstructured.
They have, they have them by summer.
They're building, they're building those things all through the year.
Yeah, they want to have it done by next year.
But not only that, didn't, didn't the courts open us up to like bigger events we can do in Atoma Park or the.
Do more high school.
Yeah, at least, so their experience with the courts we have now is they can't even host home meets or anything like that. So.
If it's, we have access to it, could we do, could, could there be a public tournament too as well too?
Yeah, I think so. That was something we talked about with the original project was the club tennis or whatever type activities where, where people play outside of school. Gotcha, okay.
To, to kind of just get back to kind of a summary of the fund, this was where we ended fiscal year twenty-three with one million dollars there. As we talked, there's been quite a bit of activity that's been happening. And so we do anticipate that we will be in a deficit, deficit position by the end of the year with the caveat that we have a plan to address this, which then would help significantly where we won't be in that position. So we'll be talking kind of more, more about that as we go along here. But I do believe when, when we make some changes and amend this from where it was when we presented it, we will be in a positive cash position. And then as I mentioned, there's a, a lot of projects on here that have been carried over and over and over that we just need to sit down and have a chance to talk with Gene about what we do with those and, and those balances and try and figure out where, where we're at on things.
When you said end of the year, end of twenty twenty-five?
Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, yes. June, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. This, this deficit should go away.
Okay.
Oh, I have a quick question to you. So in regards to some of those projects that are those bonds that haven't been spent, that money that's just kind of sitting there. And maybe it's because of our system, but what like, and maybe this isn't the time to talk about it tonight, but how are we going forward, going to ensure that we're like keeping track of that and ensuring that it's spent on, so we're not to the point where we may have to owe the IRS?
Um, well, I think the, the bigger thing is you need new financial software to do project accounting that doesn't look like a spreadsheet like this. And so that's, that's what the solution is and we're in process on that.
Real quick too, to point out like the tennis court and that hundred and eight thousand dollars, by withholding that fifty thousand, so instead of the seven fifty, it's now seven hundred, that is essentially fifty thousand dollars that was reserved back to help offset that too. That we wouldn't have had if we paid that towards construction, we wouldn't have that for design. So we do have, say, almost half of it kind of reserved back. So we're not asking the school district to pay, reimburse that. They kind of, if we don't give that other fifty thousand that they're requesting, then the way is kind of still them paying that part of it.
Well, I think you pointed out the added benefits, which I'm glad you did. So thank you for doing that.
I think my point was that it just goes back to, um, when we go on a three-way split, if we're always the one putting the money up front, then we're also going to be the ones that are, um, if some, if a project is canceled, we're going to be the ones that are spending the money. So we just need to be aware, more aware of that in the future and really say if we're going in a three-way split or fifty-fifty, then as projects come up, that's how we do it. So.
No, it's, it's a good point. And now they're taking the lead on that and depending what is raised by the friends group for that other third is what they're on hold for.
Yeah.
And I agree with both of what Phil and Zach said, but I, I more agree with Kara because irregardless of if it was, they were still going to run the concessions and everything else versus the seven hundred, the whole, the, the main topic of this, they decided to take it on city to their property, which changes fifty grand. We shouldn't be stuck with the fifty grand to have.
And she makes a good point. Like we, we don't want to keep getting home with projects.
Just have to be there.
Now we can reply.
Okay, thank you, Gene. The next fund that we're going to talk about, and I, I won't have department heads talk kind of about their, their individual equipment or requests with this one, but we'll, we'll hit it at a, a high level. So the Equipment Replacement Fund, this used to be Fund Eight Forty. And the way it used to work was that there was a, a fee essentially that was charged to multiple departments, the Road Use Tax Fund, to the Cemetery Fund, to the Airport Fund, and to another one, I think Engineering and the General Fund maybe had paid a little bit too. That all of these departments were continuously putting in money that was supposed to act as a savings account for future vehicle purchases. And as we dug down into this, it didn't, um, it didn't work as it was intended and there was no tracking of the, the fund balance at the very bottom here, this one point seven million. I could figure out what were bond proceeds from twenty twenty-two and were allocated towards specific projects, but I could not figure out how much money had the road use tax contributed and how much of that one point seven million was road use tax dollars without going back and kind of, I, I mean, I only did a three-year look back and, and that didn't get me close to figuring out one point seven million because of course there were purchases made along the way too. So as we talked about this as a department head group, we decided that it's best for road use tax to purchase their vehicles out of the road use tax fund and to transition this fund to basically being bond proceeds only moving forward. So if there are bond proceeds that are borrowed for specific vehicles, they would be deposited in this fund and those purchases would take place out of here. That's been happening for police for at least a few years, if not longer. And so that will continue to happen. But we had kind of the, the question of what do we do with one point seven million after the amount that's reduced out for bond proceeds from twenty twenty-two? We, we still have a balance. And so we decided, let's, let's go ahead and try and like, you know, do some fair purchases for some of these other departments that had been giving over the years and had, certainly have some amount of this balance, but we just can't track it. And so that's, uh, as we get into this kind of a little bit, we've got the one point two million in bond proceeds from the, what we've talked about with police cars, hazmat vehicle and fire truck are the big three that make up that number. And then we get into the police fleet, uh, ones are kind of broken out. That was a two-year bond. So police fleet, that's what we talked about. Fire fleet is here with their information that we've already talked about. Street maintenance, this is the purchase of two, um, large dump trucks that would then have the clouds and spreaders and sort of this function here. So we've got some road use tax expenses planned to come out of here to help reduce that fund balance. and sort of this function here, so we've got some road use tax, um, expenses planned to come out of here to help reduce that fund balance, um, down. And then, uh, they do have, um, a current year purchase that's coming forward, or that's, that's been purchased for two trucks as well, that'll happen in twenty twenty-four.
That's only one truck for twenty four.
Oh, one truck for twenty twenty-four. Um, and same with street cleaner, there was, uh, already a purchase as well. Okay. And then, uh, JD had, um, a purchase as well that was coming out of Fund Three Ten, uh, which we realized was, uh, initially being duplicated between some funds, so we were able to clean that up. And then he has a, a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, equipment purchase, which I think is that, is that the?
Side by side.
Okay, the side by side, um, that was, uh, not on the borrowing list because we're going to be using fund balance in this fund. And then, uh, same with this one, uh, Zach had thirty thousand dollars of bond proceeds that didn't get spent on a vehicle from twenty twenty-two, and so, there was an initial twelve thousand dollars that was needed to get the budget here to purchase a new vehicle for code. And then, uh, Parks had a mower, um, uh, depth replacement, um, and so, that would be coming from the cash balance as well. And then, um, we had an operating transfer, uh, that we, that has already been approved by a council. Um, JD had equipment that was supposed to be, uh, paid for, um, uh, out of this fund last year, but it was not paid for out of this fund, it was paid for out of his operating fund, and so, it was, uh, kind of happening in two places. And there were bond proceeds tied into this, so we moved, uh, this, this amount to his fund to kind of clean that up. So, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but I think the big picture is what we come back to, um, down here, is that we're working with a fairly large cash balance that is kind of a blend of money and that we, we were trying to spin down the portion, um, well, we're trying to spend it all down, but as we talk about the bond proceeds, um, the non-bond proceeds, we're really trying to spin it down a way that it supports the funds that have been giving to this balance kind of all along. And so, there.
All of this manipulation will pass muster when it comes to time for somebody to audit.
We talked about this with our auditors, we had questions as to why this, so an eight hundred fund is considered an internal service fund. And what was, um, happening, uh, with that is it was effectively not getting captured correctly, um, in our state, uh, financial reporting. I'm not sure how the past auditors were catching it. Current auditors agreed that it was best to put it as a three hundred fund and not as an internal service fund, and so we discussed that with them when they were on site, so.
Thank you.
And we had light funds for this room.
The sensor's on the other side of the wall.
We're saving electricity, where do you come from that?
So, any, any questions on Fund Three Ten? Okay, if not, we will keep moving forward to Fund Three Eleven, and this is the, uh, levy project, which, uh, you had a presentation on, um, at the, um, last meeting, where we are proposing one point three million dollars in bond proceeds, as you can see here. And then, uh, um, a one point three million dollar project, it is all budgeted in FY twenty-five. It will, Philip and I have talked, it will not all happen, uh, as he gets things moving, it'll be a figure out next year where things are at to, um, true up the budgets for what is likely to happen. And so, um, this is a fund I do wanna mention, uh, 'cause we've been focusing on the, the cash balances. Um, so we started the fiscal year with a negative, uh, balance, and so, we were looking at what's, what's going on here. And so there were some previous projects that had some overruns where it looks like there wasn't, uh, an additional revenue source to support those. And then, in kind of looking at this and talking with Philip and, and Engineering, um, when they work on a project, they put their wages to that project. If there's not a revenue source there, that's where we can end up in a situation like this where it ends up being a negative balance. And so, uh, we talked about how in the General Fund there is, uh, one forty, which is the levy function, and so, that would be the better place to put any wages working on, um, the levy outside of potentially one point three million if we think that that can hold the engineering wages as well as the project costs. Um, because we're not borrowing for any of our wages when we talk about doing the, the borrowings, we're talking about the project costs. So, that's kind of where we end up with a situation like this. Um, we're able to identify, um, what those wages were in FY twenty-three, and for FY twenty-four, we're proposing a transfer in from the General Fund to cover that amount, um, and then, uh, I think Sarah already did a journal entry to resolve what had already been put there in FY twenty-four, and Philip is going to change his practice, so we shouldn't have that problem moving forward, but we still have a deficit of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that we don't, we can't sit here before you tonight and present a solution, and so, we're, we're still going to be working on that. So, it will continue to show up on that much, monthly, uh, cash, uh, balance report as a negative, uh, which means it's not earning interest, um, so, there's no interest allocations until you deposit one point three million dollars in bond proceeds, assuming that project is going to be one you borrow for, and then that fund will start earning interest again, which will start to help offset, um, some of those expenses, because we'll have the cash, um, before we start seeing a lot of those project expenses.
And nobody's waiting to get paid?
Nope, it's, it's just one of those things on our sheets.
Okay.
So. Any questions about the, the fund, or any questions about the project for Philip? Okay, uh, one more here on the Capitol, or two more on the Capitol side, just forgot, forgot a big one. Um, uh, Fund Three Thirteen is the Bridge U Construction Fund, and, uh, for this one, um, we had some bond projects that we talked about at the, um, last meeting, and so, that is what we have here for a proposed revenue. And then, um, expenditures kind of as we go down, along with, there's, uh, two, um, parking lot projects that haven't fully closed out yet. Um, they, I'm assuming they'll close out probably this spring?
Yes, they'll close out this spring.
Yeah, so, so those are still listed there with kind of what was remaining on the, the projects, um, for the twenty tor, twenty twenty-four amended budget, and then the twenty twenty-five budget, um, department is where those new bond proceeds would go. And so, um, just as a reminder, the, the projects are up there on the PowerPoint slide. Um, this one is a, a very, very similar fund, um, as well, uh, the parking lot projects did go over budget, and so with that, there, there really isn't another source of funds to come in and to cover those, um, project overruns runs, as well as then having some staff time, so we're proposing to transfer in some money to take care of those staff, um, the staff overruns from the General Fund for FY twenty-three, make changes for FY twenty-four. Um, but then we still are going to be left with, uh, a small deficit that starts in, um, fiscal year twenty-four of nearly forty thousand dollars. I think we are right about like, in the month of January, the point where the cash starts to go negative. And so, uh, we'll, we'll see where things go and actually end up at the end of the year. And then FY twenty-five is just showing an in and out for the, the bond, um, proceeds and the associated projects there on your right. And, uh, that still leaves a deficit that is another one that's on our books. It means that that fund is not earning interest until those bond proceeds would be deposited and the cash balance would go back to positive. Um, but we can't borrow money for the deficit that sits there, so, um, we've gotta come up with another way to fix that one. So that is also on our to-do list and to-review list.
So our, um, sheet, we must not have an updated sheet, 'cause it shows a deficit of fif, about fifty-eight thousand.
Oh, um, I don't recall.
Is it not showing the twenty-four revenue maybe?
No, I don't think it is.
This might have been one that I changed.
Check your revenue, maybe missing that eighteen thousand.
That's what misses the revenue.
Yeah.
That eighteen.
Yeah, if you leave that eighteen four, that's gonna be about the, that difference.
Yeah.
What did you, and then what did you say is the, so eighteen four, okay, what did you say is going to, we borrow from the General Fund?
Uh, transferred from the General Fund, um.
So wage cost?
Uh, eighteen, is the eighteen thousand four hundred. There, there actually probably, I, I will have to look, there might be some interest allocations that, because our first interest allocation was basically looking at July through November, um, and so, there would be a cash, there would have been a cash balance for part of that, so there might be a small interest allocation that was performed for that, but I'm gonna guess the December one was probably very small, in January it'd be close to zero. So, um, I will, I will review this one and let you know if there are any other changes. And we can send out what's up on the screen to you as well, so that you have, have this one.
Scott, how, how extensive are the proposed roof repairs? You're talking just patching a few places, you're talking about redoing most of the roof?
No, just patches for now. At some point here, I guess I'll have to talk to Philip a little bit more, I mean, the building's about eighteen years old, so at some point, we'll be looking more at, at replacing the roof, um, but this would be just more patchwork.
Any questions on Fund Three Thirteen? Okay, just know that one's still on our list, we'll email you out kind of what, what this one looks like, and, uh, you'll have the most up-to-date information. And then, um, uh, finally, the last construction fund that we have, and I would say probably very close to Fund Three Oh One, the biggest, uh, mo, or biggest in terms of project spending happening in recent, in, uh, upcoming years, is, uh, the Sewer Construction Fund, so Philip, I'll let you.
I want to just remember, there's a lot fewer projects here, just really, really big. So the first one is Green Street, that's under construction now, kind of on pause with all the snow and, you know, being it's winter time, you can't pay anything back. The money in there, we got, everything should be done on Green Street, there's about one point six million dollars worth that we're gonna be building in twenty twenty-four, that should be done by the end of this fiscal year, the only thing.
Is that down, down the early tracks?
Yes.
Or they're working that?
Yep, yep. Um, there's seventy-five thousand that'll carry over into twenty-five, because there's two slide gates, right now there's just a flap gate at the outlet. We're gonna install two slide gates eventually, but the lead time on those is a long time, so they, they won't come in till after July first, so that seventy-five thousand dollars is what's gonna be left over in the next fiscal year for the, for the gates. Um, now a couple of the big ones, this next one is the, the Phase Eight Design, that was this Division One?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that job is complete, so we closed that out, December. Couple of you guys weren't here, but, our girl and guy wasn't here, but that one's closed out, so don't worry about Division One anymore. Division Two Design. So, there's still money, that's in Division Two, 'cause when we let the contract for Division Two Design, we were planning on going from Four Street to Jefferson, well, we got that stag grant, so now Division Two became just the stag grant part, and now Division Three is the rest of it. So, there'll be an amendment to this design amount for the Sewer Construction Fund for fit, for Division Two Design, because that one project became two. You'll hear more about it on the next council meeting on the sixth, but that's why there's money in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five for that project still. And it's not a whole lot, and it's actually, we got a pretty good deal on it, 'cause they thought there's gonna be ten million dollars for the construction, and it's gonna be more like seventeen million dollars for the construction, and we're paying like, ten percent more for design, we're getting like, seventy percent more work done, so, that'll be a good deal for us. Phase Eight Division Two Construction, that is let, we awarded the contract, the insurance and bonds are gonna be on the next council meeting. They actually plan on starting, they'd like to start in March, if the ground's not frozen. And that project will carry, it's phased differently, 'cause we have to do Four Street when school's out, but we have it phased so that they're gonna work all year round. And if it's not frozen like this, they will, they'll, they'll work all year round, the, the pipes deep enough, they can, they can keep working as long as the processing is thick enough, they can't dig through it. So I'm anticipating it'll be done by July of twenty twenty-five. Could get delayed, could have weather, it could freeze up like in twenty thirteen, they don't do it, but like to get all the spending done now, if it could be done now, so that way, we underwrite it, instead of having to find more money in twenty-five to get it done. And then Division Three Design, this is kind of what I was saying, like, Division Three Design is, is what led to Division Two Design, so it's kind of different how it's being charged, but, um, that project is getting close to being designed. The construction will be SRF loans, um, but that's gonna be, I think, a future discussion here in a few months. We'd like to get that one let this spring as well, get it constructed, and get him started working on that by the summer. There's a lot of moving pieces, and can't really fill them with blanks yet until we decide how to fund it.
Your goal is this year?
Yeah, so like, there's six hundred feet of, it's a trunk line for Division Two, that's their first phase. Once that's done, we can let Division Three, they can connect onto that, and be working simultaneously with Division Two, to get stuff, keep it moving forward.
And where's the location of those?
Um.
Approximately?
Division Two is Four Street, basically from the high school to Ash Street, like, to the high school to Wilson School, and then a little bit north and south of there, and then Division Three is starting at Center Street, well, starting just north of Jeff, just north of Four Street, Center Grant, then all the way up to where like, Norris and Jefferson meet, where the old gas station was, it's shut down. About where it'll stop, and all, all the way over to Elm slash Iowa Avenue on the east end. It'll be about twelve million bucks, but, uh, except we, it'll be, there'll be discussions in the future, several other council meetings or work sessions before we get to that point.
Um, just to kind of talk about the revenues and to preview a, a little bit, I'm gonna just show you this and then go back up to the revenues, so, uh, we've, we are anticipating that there will be about five and a half million, um, a little bit more than five and a half million dollars in expenditures by the end of the current fiscal year, and so with what's expected to be transferred in, and what the balance was, we're, we're in a spot where we won't run negative, and we'll be watching this as we go, um, but I think Philip has been generous with what he's placed in the FY twenty-four budget to help us make sure that we won't be, um, going into a, a negative position, or what, whatever is submitted is not going to exceed what he's put there. And then really, the, next year we're looking at five million of expenditures and five million revenue. We do end with a positive balance, but I think, uh, in projects these large, we know that there will be change orders that come along, and so, uh, we'll be working to con, to continue to fund those. Um, but up at the top and looking at the revenue is, we're looking at transfers in from other funds, and so we're, we're looking at, um, three million dollars coming in, uh, this fiscal year. Uh, let me scroll back over here from local option sales tax, um, which again, that's a, that's a sizable amount, but there's some balance there to, to work with, um, and then looking at one, uh, point five million dollars in the next year, um, as well as then, uh, one million dollars coming from the Sewer Improvement Fund. And the Sewer Improvement Fund is the thing I wanna preview a little bit, uh, there is language in our ordinances, which is pretty restrictive, that says that that fund can only be used for treatment plant improvements, and so, we will be recommending an ordinance change to broaden that, to, um, have the, include the sewer collection system, as well as equipment and other things that are necessary for sewer operations as a whole, and not just the treatment plant portion. And so, I don't know if we know if that will be for First Reading yet on the February sixth?
It should be.
Okay. So, uh, that would be on your agenda, and we'll talk more in depth about that and the specific language that would be added there to be able to use, um, that million dollars towards this project.
Can you scroll up? That spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, just point out too, there's two and a half million dollars of federal grants that comes in for that money too.
Yes. So, again, this is one where, uh, a lot of project is happening, um, with cash on hand, that it's not necessary to borrow for. Um, but as, uh, Philip alluded to, we're getting to the size of projects where now we're gonna have to start talking about doing some borrowing and what that looks like, and that will be a future conversation of how we pay off those bonds using the resources that we have currently as well. So, any questions on Fund Three Fifteen, or any of the capital funds that we've gone through here tonight?
We have any idea what the lost fund generates yearly?
Uh, about four and a half million, it was about four million last year, but as I looked at kind of where we are year to date over where we were last year, year to date, I think we're gonna be about four and a half million, and it looks like that's kind of what it's been in the past as well. So, um, that's what we're operating off of, and so, in, um, prior years to fiscal year twenty-three, it doesn't look like that full four million to four and a half million was being allocated out. It is, it was in fiscal year twenty-three, and it is in fiscal year twenty-four. It is, it was in fiscal year '23, and it is in fiscal year '24, and it is in fiscal year '25. So some of that's, you know, current year, you know, projected current year FY '25 funds, as well as some fund balance. So, but we'll be talking more about that one and kind of where do those dollars go. But you've seen two big areas that are being cash financed with basically local option sales tax.
Thank you.
I will be looking at the renewal of that, or requesting a renewal of that program in the near future as well. For this very reason.
Okay, we are ready to start then on the general fund side of things. Okay, so tonight we have a much more condensed kind of group of funds that we were trying to get through the last meeting. So we're gonna talk about the General Fund 001, the Parking Rent Fund 002, the ARPA Fund 003, and Franchise Fee Fund 005. But the thing that's unique about these is, when on a state forum, when you see General Fund, all of these are summed together. So we often talk about the General Fund being 001, but when it comes to reporting, all of these are considered General Funds of the city, so. One thing I do want to point out to you, I did hand out this sheet of paper, and to be just fully transparent and honest, this is a process that has a lot of human touch, and allows for human error and made-in error, which Zach was kind enough to point out, as we said, review this summary sheet. So the summary sheet that went out in your packet did not have the planning and development expenses listed there. And so when we added that in, that is where the deficit that we're talking about increased from the, I think it was 500 and some thousand, and what was originally in your packet, up to 855,000. And so this is kind of the sheet that I want you to look at more tonight, as we talk very high level about where we're at on things, and what the next steps are kind of moving forward. So one of the things I do want to mention here, and I'll kind of stand up again for this. So there is a column that is on that sheet for FY '24 amended budget, and so I want to talk a little bit about that process, and how it kind of runs parallel, it mostly runs parallel to what we're doing, but we'll have a different sort of timeline. So we are not going to be bringing you the amended budget for fiscal year '24 on the exact same timeline as the fiscal year '25 budget. Fiscal year '25 budget also has some maximum property tax levy hearings and things that we don't have to worry about amending. We just simply need to have a public hearing, set a public hearing, have a public hearing showing that it's amended. And so I picked out those dates of March 19th, regular council meeting to set the public hearing, and then April 2nd to hold that public hearing. I believe all of your budget amendments are supposed to be done no later than May 31st, so we'll be ahead of the schedule here on this one, and I believe we'll be setting enough authority that if there's any overruns on anything, we won't be overspending a category of general government, public safety, culture, recreation, and so on, which results in comment and your audit if you do overspend those. So we want to avoid those if we can, especially when it's something that's in our control. So as you look at this column, there is $733,000 showing there as a deficit currently for the current year. What, all that has been done in the FY '24 amended to get there is basically reviewing the current, the current year-to-date spending through about mid-January to figure out what line items were significantly overspent, and needed to be adjusted from that budget, and adding those in. So essentially, and then adjusting revenues as well. So essentially, we've adjusted those things, but we have not gone back and looked at the 2024 wages in the General Fund, which as I mentioned earlier, we had originally put those kind of at the maximum level, and that's how they were budgeted for fiscal year 2024. So if Jessica Kinzer has an anniversary date of, you know, January 30th, I would not have a step increase to January 30th, but the way that we've been budgeting in the past is that that step increase would be budgeted in from July 1st and be in there the whole year. So there's cushion on wages and things that has been built into the fiscal year '24 budget, that now is the time to go back and to kind of pull those things out of, what positions have been vacant for a part of the year, or we project will continue to be vacant for a certain number of payroll periods, so that we can remove that, and we'll be getting that number down. The other thing is, going back to department heads and saying, okay, it's time to review your FY '24 budget, you know, we made some adjustments where we think you're gonna go over budget, but now it's time for you to look at those line items where you haven't had any spending for maybe two or three fiscal years, do you really need a budget there, and start reducing items out. So FY '24, still very, very, very much in process, and we're working on it, but I kind of wanted to give you the lay of the land of the work that we're doing there. Any questions about the current fiscal year budget for the General Fund? Okay. So now here's where we're gonna get into a lot of numbers. It was a fun day of crunching numbers and things to get this ready, but I thought that this was really important information to start talking about. So with fiscal year 2025, we're showing a deficit as is, as you can see on there. And so one of the things that I think I kind of mentioned last week is, our process kind of got all offended by the audit and getting things from the state and from the county auditor, and that when we had intended to meet with department heads originally, we weren't able to do that. So what we did is, we took all the data, got it in here, and basically started working with it. So you are seeing something that's still a very raw in form. Phil communicated to all department heads on Friday with the information that we had at the time of, okay, everybody needs to start looking at your budgets, and we will start meeting this week to start going through things. And so we already have some departments that have split things electronically where we don't need to meet, but we will be meeting with everybody, so this number is going to go down. And just know that that's something that we're still working on. We're not presenting this to you tonight as, here is the General Fund, you know, let's talk about how we're going to get this down, or what we're going to do, because that is something we're still working on, but because this was on the agenda, we wanted to make sure you knew where we were at and what our process was.
Does the pay increases the staff is supposed to get in FY '25, does that come out of the General Fund?
There's quite a bit that come out of the General Fund, and so we, that was one of the moves that we did from kind of where wages were originally budgeted at that high level, was that was having the FY '25 increase happen all on July 1st, and so we split it to July 1st and January 1st. So that then sort of lessened a little bit there. But Barb has spent a considerable amount of time going back and sort of taking out all of the cushion in FY '25, because we don't have room for cushion when we're talking about a number like this.
Yeah, because the staff was really promised those step increases in FY '25 if they were, do an increase of more than $5,000 in FY '24. So I hope that that's not gonna get cut.
At this point, that is not on the table for cut. So one of the-
So we had to use, what, 1.3... No, okay, so about 1.3 million to fund deficits from this past year, correct? And the levy, I think I added like 1.328 grand, right?
I'm not sure, I mean, there's, there's, there was a deficit of about $1 million in the General Fund for fiscal year '23, and so I'm not sure the other ones that you're-
No, I'm talking about, we had to take money, transfer money from the General Fund for the levy and the PBC.
Oh yeah, for wages, that's happening in the current fiscal year, FY '24.
Yes, so then we're, because we're leaving FY '24 in a deficit, correct? Am I reading this correctly?
The way that it's shown here right now, but there is still a lot of work that needs to happen on FY '24 to get that number down, and I think wages is one area where that happens in terms of just removing sort of the maximum stuff.
So there's a potential that, but there's no, I should say, there's probably not a potential that we'll enter FY 20, like, end the year with a surplus, correct? I'm just looking at like-
It's too early to tell right now, I would say that's kind of how I would answer that, is we just haven't had enough time to spend on FY '24 to really be able to tell that, so. So now we're gonna talk a little bit about tax levies, so, because we've had some changes with the combined General Fund levy, and I think there's an important story here to know, but then we'll kind of talk about what does it all mean at the end. So we talked a little bit about this last week, related to debt and the total tax levy. So for FY '24, these four different tax levies existed, funding the General Fund, the Bridgeview Center, the library, and then the emergency fund gets transferred into the General Fund at the end of the fiscal year. And so for 2024, those four tax levies equaled six point, almost $6.5 million, with essentially $5.2 million of that going to the General Fund. So new for FY '25, you're gonna hear the acronym CGFL, probably a lot moving forward, which means Combined General Fund Levy. So the state legislature passed some legislation, which said the Civic Center goes away, the library levy goes away, and the emergency levy goes away, among a number of other levies that they took away, and basically kept the 810, but said, we don't want to penalize you necessarily, starting right away. So we'll call this the Combined General Fund Levy. So city of Atumwa, you start out at $8.77, or $8.77 and a half cents, which is where you were in the current fiscal year, fiscal year '24. The caveat to that being, if you grow as a city, if your non-TIF taxable value grows, then that's where the legislation says you don't get $8.77 and a half cents. And so, and unfortunately, we saw an 8.68% growth rate, which is great, that's a great growth rate, it's wonderful to have. You don't see those things happening every year, but that put us in the above 6% category, where our revenue growth was reduced by 3%. And so rather than $8.77 and a half cents, we went to $8.51. So as we, as I thought, like, how do we talk about this in dollars, and what that impact really means? And so I'm glad that you have this on your slides and can take it home and study it, because I think this will start some conversations, and hopefully lead to some ability to tell the story of what this legislation has done in Atumwa, and what it means. Is that, you know, as we looked at the total dollars for fiscal year '24, we were looking at 5.6 million. If we looked at the $8.77 and a half cents of levies would have existed in fiscal year '25 with the growth that we were allowed, that would have been a total of $6.1 million. Instead, we kind of slide back to 5.95, almost $6 million. And so what that translates into dollars specifically in the General Fund is we're seeing effectively $297,000 worth of growth versus $458,000, $459,000 worth of growth. So there's a difference there, and when we're talking about deficits, you know, those dollars matter. As we're looking at the total revenue difference between the FY '24 and then the FY '25 Combined General Fund levy, we are looking at $311,000 in new property tax revenue to support operations, and that includes the library levy, that includes the emergency levy, that includes the levy that would transfer out to the Bridgeview Fund to support those operations, as well as then the General Fund levy. So we're not talking about huge numbers when you're looking at a $20 million budget overall. So the takeaways that I took from this is that the new system does not reward Atumwa's hard work to increase valuations. I think Zach would sit back there and tell you that he works with your community partners to do everything he can to bring more dollars and higher tax valuation to this community every day. And that is, that is what you need here, I mean, you need, you need the growth to be able to support the operations. And so this new system basically said, that's great that you grew, now we're gonna cut your revenue. So it didn't, it doesn't work for Atumwa, it doesn't work for supporting the operations. Now that said, the difference here between 458 and 296 is we're looking at, what, 162,000, $164,000 when we're talking about a deficit of 855, that's not gonna take care of a whole deficit, but every little bit helps. And this new legislation, unfortunately, in this first year, is penalizing Atumwa. The big picture with this legislation is that by the start of fiscal year '29, so July 1 of 2028, that'll be down to $8.10 flat, you won't have anything else to collect on, it'll be $8.10 flat. So between fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '29, there will be a loss of dollars, we don't know which years those will happen in, if it's going to sort of be a cliff thing where you just fall off of a cliff, you can hang on to $8.51, $8.52 as a Combined General Fund levy for a few years, and then you just fall to $8.10, or if there will be more years of growth above that 6% mark, where you're gonna have to get ratcheted back. So more to come on that, we're in the first year, it's a really hard sort of place to be and predict where you might end up, because growth is good, and there's a lot of people working in Atumwa to promote the growth of the city and increase valuations.
So I would just, so on here, it says only, I feel like that kind of, I don't like the word only, because like you said in the next bullet, this does hurt Atumwa, this legislation does hurt Atumwa, it's gonna continue to hurt Atumwa, and we have to remember that, like, when we're talking to our legislators.
That only with $311,000 is pitiful, I mean, yeah, so that only is not meant to be negative or negative.
I'm just making it clear, like, this is gonna continue to hurt us, I mean, I think, it's like you said, and so I think it's like, as we see our legislators, we need to continue to have conversations with them about how this is hurting Atumwa.
Yes, and so now this is the Atumwa story for year 1, this is what this means. And so, you know, it is, it's an impact, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt. The total tax levy drops, and that's great, because that has been a goal of yours, is to get that down, but that has consequences too, and kind of the General Levy and what that means for the General Fund and the operations of the city. So the General Fund, just, yes.
I agree, though, like Kara said, I was just wondering from your perspective, like, I'm sure this is a big conversation in the League of Cities. How does Atumwa maybe compare to some of our sister cities? Are we in a similar position, like, when you look at Fort Dodge, Muscatine, Burlington, are they maybe suffering? I'm just kind of curious maybe, like, how, if you maybe looked at that, how we might compare to some of our sisters.
I haven't seen anything, yeah, they haven't put that information out yet.
They have charts, at least in the library world, for how much all of the cities that participate in the library levy, how much they are gonna lose, or how much they should have gotten in this next fiscal year, so there are comparisons on that, I don't have it at my fingertips, but there are people out there comparing those numbers.
Yeah, everybody's still in process at this point, there is a mid-sized cities group list that Phil is part of, but I know there just hasn't, I mean, everybody's still very much in the budget process, so there hasn't been a recent meeting to kind of talk about where everybody's looking to be. But one other thing that I should just mention, that kind of leads me to believe next year might not be a good year, so the residential rollback is a really hard thing to understand, but it basically determines how much of your property is taxable, and that went below 50% for the first time, and I don't know how long, I don't know if Tom knows anything from way back when, but I always remember it being 55 to 60%, and it's now below 50%. Yeah, 40, yeah, 46, and so that means that of your property, only 46% of that assessed value is taxable, and so that is a significant drop. Well, what happens next year, and when the residential rollback increases, that means everybody's non-TIF taxable value is going to be increasing as well. I think it's hard to tell what the rollback is gonna do, but the rollback reacted to the significantly higher housing prices that were being paid across the state, and so that was the, that was the reaction there, then there will be another action, reaction next year, so.
I was just gonna say, all this is predicated on the fact that the state wants to continue to tell the public that they're lowering taxes. The thing they don't tell you is, when you lower taxes statewide, what's it do to your level of services? That's the thing that people don't get the connection.
Yes, so that's something that I think it's up to all of you to really put that message out there, is there is a connection between level of services and property taxes paid.
And the special levies, or I think, I think all of them, at least the library and the Hertie Center one, were voted on and supported by the community, so it was a decision not just by the city council, but by the citizens.
So where we are in the General Fund, just to kind of give you some of the things, we talked about, we still have to meet with some department heads to figure out where we're at on expenditures, but there's an- But there's a, in addition to property taxes, there's a few other large revenue sources. The administrative fees is basically a 10% charge to a multitude of funds to basically come back and support sort of all of the administrative services provided by administration, HR, IT, finance. So there's not like these individual allocations coming out. The funds just pay a set amount. So there's, there's some possibilities. We could see some increase there. We just got, just had a meeting related to the self-insurance, health insurance. And so we don't have those funds prepared, but just placeholders are sitting in there now from the current fiscal year. We'll talk about this just a little bit more when we talk about the franchise fee fund. We don't have our fourth quarter of 2023 franchise fee payments in. And so we don't have like a whole year of data yet that we can say, "This is where we comfortably think we will be." So we've got some average placeholders in there that get us basically to 1.4 million in FY24, which is going to be going down from where we thought initially at 1.6 and then 1.5 in FY25. But those numbers are subject to change. I think we're thinking it might be by the second week of February, we would see those come in via mail and via check. So we would be able to do some updates then. And then we haven't really talked about with department heads at all any new increases or new increases in fees or new fees that could be considered to be brought forward. But again, we're not talking about something that's, we're talking about little bits and pieces. On the expenditure side, I just wanted to give you some information of kind of how things break down because the summary sheet doesn't really break things down. But as we look at it, $9.1 million of the $20 million budget is wages. And so there's, there's a, a big number there. $4.4 million is benefits, but that comes with revenue covering all $4.4 million. So that's kind of an in and an out. So when you kind of remove that, the wages are either 45% of the $20 million budget unadjusted or 58% of essentially a $15.6 million budget, once you remove those benefits and how those are covered. So as we're looking, there's about $4.7 million of non-personnel expenses that we'll be scrutinizing in addition to having those conversations about what positions could be delayed or not filled or, you know, that type of thing, putting a hold on things kind of as we move forward and trying to manage the budget as well. So we're looking at February 13 workshop or February 20, probably is the next time to bring this forward. I don't think we have enough time this week to turn it around and get it on to a February 6 meeting for discussion. But there's just a lot of moving pieces here. And we want to make sure we've done our due diligence in getting you the best information possible.
What would be some, just quickly, what would be some examples of the non-personnel expenses that are going to be under scrutiny?
Um, contractual services. I can tell you from one of the thickets that I've offered up from the finance department is we, we've been paying for the Rochester Car Armored Service. And we realized that that's just too expensive to continue at the cost that's there. And so we're, we're going to be looking to get rid of that in the current fiscal year to have that. That's, that's, I think, I think it was like $5,000. So I mean, that's not, you know, that's not a, a small amount. It's a small amount in comparison, but it, that's an operational change that will have lasting impact there.
What is that?
Uh, it's a Rochester armored car service for.
I just heard Rochester.
Then we also have things like we pay a contract to mow certain areas in the city. Those are contractual agreements, I suppose.
Yeah. And so that's where there's, that would also include operating supplies, training, you know, travel, electricity, gas, you know, your utilities for buildings. We've tried to be as, as generous as possible in what we think those budgets will be. So, but it'll be going back through and, and reviewing everything with departments and identifying where, where we can present some reductions. So stay tuned. More to come on that. But wanted you to have the very big picture of where we're at right now. And just know more will be coming. So as we go into kind of our first funds here, we have the parking ramp fund, which is a, a pretty easy fund to talk about because it basically accounts for the expenses of the Second Street Parking Ramp. It did have enforcement, parking enforcement wages in it at one point. And so we've done everything we can to move those out. So those are in the general fund in their own function of parking enforcement. I think the thing to note here, just pulling up kind of the, into the, into the spreadsheet information is, positive information is there was a positive starting cash balance there. And we are looking at this being a fund that's going to be generating some revenues, has very minimal expenses. And so we see that those, that projected ending balance for the end of fiscal year 25 is projected to grow. Any questions on the parking ramp fund? Okay. Next is the American Rescue Plan Fund. And this, uh, this one has a little bit more history that I've kind of tried to cover that goes beyond sort of the fiscal year 23 information. But there was actually between fiscal year 22, which was when the first half payment was received in fiscal year 23, $3.6 million was received as part of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Big things to note is that all funds have to be committed by December 31 of 2024. You have successfully done that. And they all have to be spent by December 31 of 2026. And it appears that we are well on our way to meeting those two requirements of these money. So in fiscal year 2022, $562,000 went into the general fund to compensate for lost revenue as a result of COVID. In fiscal year 23, there were retention bonuses that were paid out to be supported by ARPA to multiple funds, so not just the general fund. Those totaled $157,000. And so those were transfers that were made. In fiscal year 24, we are anticipating transferring out about $2 million, which I'll kind of, this is the, the column F here to look at and kind of give you a, a little bit of an overview of this. Some of these have already happened. They probably should have taken place in fiscal year 23, but we just caught them too late and did them when we could do them. So the Shower House and Parking Lot project was supposed to have $367,000, $300,000, $671. And so that transfer just took place, I believe, in September 30th transfer resolution that we would have had probably in November. The City Hall project, this one, not all of this has taken place. We're kind of monitoring that project and transferring in as we need to for different expenses. So this is kind of a placeholder number to get to a nice round number for budgeting purposes of nearly 1.5 million going into Fund 151, which we haven't talked about, but will soon, that has the City Hall project in it. We also have the Medium Density Housing Prototype where there is $30,000 that has been spent there so far. That was transferred into the general fund as part of a December 31 resolution to transfer in. Two that we have coming forward to you on another December 31 resolution because as you start digging into a budget, you tend to find more things and question what's, what's happening. There is a Retail Strategies contract that is a three-year contract that was running out of the general fund. And we are transferring in for, I think, last fiscal year and this current fiscal year at $75,000 to cover the expenses. And then finally, we kind of talked about with Fund 309, that there'd be $114,651.22 to transfer into Fund 309 to cover the deficit on the Greater Atumwa Park. And then that gets Fund 309 to that positive cash position at the end of fiscal year 25, possibly even fiscal year 24, I believe. So, so there's a few different transfers that would take place in the current fiscal year. That would be a majority of the money, leaving just 985,000 to transfer out in the next fiscal year, which would be the final payment on the Retail Strategies contract to $25,000, as well as then at this point, any remaining funds, whether it's now coming from interest or would be remaining ARPA funds. Any remaining funds will all go into Fund 151, the City Hall Improvement Project, to ensure that we have adequate funding there. Any questions about the ARPA fund? So once, once we're done with these monies and everything's been transferred out and we close out that final fiscal year, this fund will just basically drop off and kind of no longer be something that we'll be actively budgeting in. And then the final fund that is on our agenda tonight is the Franchise Fee Fund. And I can tell you, we ended fiscal year 23 with some revenue that was also supposed to be transferred out to the City Hall project. So we've got that planned in for fiscal year 24. But we are projecting $1, $200,000 for the 2024 amendment coming in from Mid-America for the gas and $1.2 million for Alliant. We, for what was received in last fiscal year for Alliant, we don't really know what their starting period was. For Mid-American, it was very clear that they remitted from basically March through June and kind of what we, what we had to work with. So we've had to make some guesses on where we're at. And that's where we get to essentially these total, this total of 1.4 million to give our best estimate as where we stand right now. But as I mentioned earlier, the fourth quarter payment for 2023 will, will I think really help give us the information we need to adjust this number. I, I think it will be adjusted up. I don't think it will be adjusted down. I think we're fairly conservative and kind of the average, you know, estimate that we put in to, to get kind of this number. And then we are estimating that some things would probably go up in FY25. So that's where we're looking at 1.5 million. Again, that could be adjusted upward, up based on what we see. Or if we're really not going to see much more than the 1.4 million, we would be adjusting that down more than likely. The big thing that's out there right now that I think we just don't know, you know, is Alliant has taken a proposed rate increase to the Iowa Utilities Board. We don't know if the Iowa Utilities Board will enact that or not, but that would then impact this revenue as well. And so this fund is, is fairly simple in what it does. It's basically, there's that first amount that would be going to the City Hall Improvement Project. And then what is being transferred in this current fiscal year, which we are doing quarterly and have been doing in $300,000 amounts because we just aren't sure where that end will be and we don't want to over-transfer, is to the general fund to support public safety. And so that is what is proposed for next fiscal year, that the entire amount collected would be transferred to the general fund to support public safety. So you can kind of see how unknowns in one area can create unknowns in another area and why we still think there's, there's room for improvement here and more work to be done.
And to clarify, franchises can only be used for certain things. And so while we transfer to the general fund to support public safety, we're able to free up other monies in the general fund to pay other bills.
Yes. Yes. Thank you for, for noting that. And there is a whole list of, list of approved uses that are, that mirror basically what Iowa Code provides. Okay, uh, now we're going to get into some funds that are supported by the general fund. And so just to kind of talk about where, where things sit as sort of the transfers out in the general fund, I'm going to pull up the library worksheet here. If Sonya would like to come forward to the hot seat. So Sonya has not seen this slide, so. Things, things kind of don't happen much ahead of schedule when we're in the middle of budget process. But there were, as I analyze things, there were a few things that I thought were kind of interesting about the, about what had been put together and submitted by Sonya and the library board. Specifically that when we looked at, you know, what had been previously coming in for the current fiscal year from the library tax levy, because that exists right now, as well as then the transfer in from the general fund, what we're seeing for fiscal year 25, when the city's transferring in to essentially cover both of those items now, it's a $29,000 increase. And so that is what I would call a fairly minimal increase on something that's a, it's less than 10% on what ends up being about a, I think it was a $435, $436,000 or $417,000 transfer in. So a positive thing to point out that expenses, I interpret that as expenses in the library have not gone completely out of control compared to where we are in the current fiscal year, as well as being able to manage some, some wage increases of about $50,000 as well within, within the budget. But Sonya, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I mean, some of it, I just want to give some history and some perspective on what, what you're paying for on the operating side, which is the 133 account. We also have the benefit of the 173 account, which is a gift in request. In the operating side though, last year, the city provided through the general fund, I think it was $230,000 plus that $20,000, I don't know if that's the retention or.
Yep, that was the retention.
Bonus or whatever. In addition to the $173,000 from the library levy. So the $436,000 would be about, slightly more than that, but about the same. And over all the years that I've been here, that amount from the city has not covered even just our salaries. So in the operating side, that also revenue includes money coming from the county, money coming from our accreditation via the state library, and money coming in from some donations. There's two endowments. One is called the Hackworth Estate. This gentleman died in 1920, 1919. His wife died in 1920. And so we've been collecting on that for over 100 years. And that is counted on the operating side. So we're benefiting from a donation on that. And the average is about $130,000. As Jessica said, or I think she has on, in the bullet point, we don't pay for anything other than salary and the building upkeep on the operating side. So any building, or any books, any materials, any programming that you see us advertise, that's all paid from the gift in request side. So I always, when I give presentations, call that the cherry on top. So if ever we don't get any donations or those go down, that's when you'll see our programming go down. I might not have staff to process the books, but we'll always have new books coming in because that is how the people who left us those trusts stipulated that that money be spent. The, I guess my biggest accounts that I can manipulate on the operating side would be our operating expenses. And that counts, you know, any of the expenses that we do to process the books, you know, like the covers, the stickers, all that kind of stuff, and any of the cleaning supplies, any of that kind of stuff. Other than that, there's not a whole lot I can manipulate out of that. Our library staff is under contract. We only have two exempt positions. So the salary increases that you guys have generously projected have not gone into effect for the library staff yet because our contract does not come up till next year. So those aren't even in this round of budget projections. So next year it'll be higher.
Yeah, just to, to build back on some things, this is one of those funds that does get charged that administrative fee, which is actually decreasing because it used to include the property tax levy as part of the revenues that would generate the percentage coming back to the general fund. Well, when those property taxes don't exist, we exclude the transfers in because that's sort of a weird double dipping sort of thing. So, so that is actually dropping. And then just another thing to, to mention that the employee benefits are supported by the Employee Benefits Tax Levy. As we've kind of talked about that area on the total tax levy sheet, that also includes the benefit, benefits for the library and for the cemetery, as well as then the airport as well too. So it's not just the general fund benefits. There's a few others that we cover there too. And then we also have a tax levy for property and liability insurance, which I think we'll be talking more about at the next meeting. And that, that is a benefit to the library and to the cemetery as well that we transfer in to cover property and liability costs for, for both of those entities to just, again, provide a little bit more relief that doesn't have to come from the general fund because it can come from those other two areas. And then I'll just point out, kind of here we are at the bottom. We're talking about an amended budget, probably in the neighborhood of $885,000 to still kind of be reviewed with Sonya. And then $906,000, almost $907 is what we're proposing for FY24. And then, uh, 906,000, um, almost 907 is what we're proposing for FY, uh, '25. And then as we come down here and we look at where we are at, um, we have put that transfer in to basically, uh, keep our revenues and expenditures the same. And so I think that as we talk about those transfers in, um, being kind of contingent upon getting to that, you know, uh, revenues and expenditures being equal, we'll always at the end of each fiscal year actually do a true up to see what needed to, to happen there and, um, make any adjustments as needed with kind of that year end sort of final transfer resolution that would come forward. So
Your revenue and expenditures on the sheet there are not neutral?
Um, they are for fiscal year 25.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. So, so we're going to let fiscal 24 be whatever fiscal year 24 is going to be. It was just a set dollar amount coming in. If there's something that happens where it looks like things are going to go significantly in a negative direction, that's where I think we'll be having more of a conversation with you when we come forward with that, um, final resolution for transferring funds for the year. But, uh, there is a starting, a cash starting balance in this fund and, uh, a little bit is supposed to be used in the current fiscal year. But we are not planning on any in the next fiscal year. So it'd still leave an ending cash balance of 155,000 there, uh, which is, um, if you, if you think about it, that's a, that's a, a good balance to have, um, for a fund where you're getting closer to about a million dollars worth of operating expenditures on an annual basis.
So if the library levy goes away, does that mean the library fund goes away and everything gets paid out of the General Fund then going forward in the future?
Well, effectively that's sort of what's happening by transferring in to meet anything that revenues don't cover. So, um, but I, I would say at this point accounting wise, I don't see a reason to take it out of a special revenue fund, that it's very easy to just program a, a transfer in at this point.
And as Sonya mentioned, they, they still get revenue coming from the county and from some other sources in addition to the city.
But she also said that, uh, the, the library fund hasn't paid all of her salary and benefits.
We've been, uh, take
So where does the money come from?
Yeah, we've been spending down from the, the best, the fund balance. I think when I started here 13 years ago, I, I, I shouldn't say numbers because I'm bad at remembering, but it was significantly higher. I would guess around 400,000. And I, I was instructed to spend a little down each year. So we, I, I think the goal of the board, the library board was to try to keep it at, at a minimum of 150,000. So I'm getting to that point. Um, so
I think what Sonya said was that the, the transfer in from the General Fund does not, uh, cover the salaries that, that, um, you know, as we're talking about 436,000, salaries are budgeted at 506. So what's being transferred in isn't covering, or isn't covering so that there are revenues that are really, they're departmental revenues that are having to cover a, a portion of wages as well.
From the difference.
Yeah. I, yeah, I, I probably oversimplify it, but I consider that the city's portion of our funding is barely getting to the salaries. That's not counting the building expenses and all that. So all these other revenues are funding, keeping up the 121-year-old building.
Do you track people's usage of library?
Yes.
So you know how many people come and go in the fiscal year?
Yeah, and I, um, we are in the process of making our annual report that I will provide to you guys in the coming weeks. But yeah, and it's, COVID, you know, we have to just put an asterisk by some of those years, but it was significantly higher last year than it would have been in 2019, which is, I think, the last comparable year. Yeah, so, um, the, the usage has gone up and, um, I mean, I'll share with any of you if you want to come down and take a tour, but we are always, uh, uh, adjusting to the needs of the public. So it's not just books that you come and check out anymore. You know, like in last year, we added the, um, expanded the library thing. So like there's, uh, outdoor games you can check out. There's, um, Wi-Fi hotspots. So for those who don't have internet at their home, um, they can get free internet for the time that they have them checked out. So
And garden tools.
Yeah, garden tools. Um, so there's all kinds of things. And all of our programming is expanding as far as what's useful to the, uh, public and, um, what makes the biggest difference. And, um, the social activity of people who, um, don't have other ways of participating in the community, through our coffee and conversations, through our reminisce societies are all great and in addition to the childhood stuff with the literacy programs.
And Arthur, several books on digital file and people don't have
Oh, yeah.
Physically carry the books out.
And the biggest project in the last year has been the digitization, I hate that word, of our, uh, microfilm. So any of the Atomo Courier now can be, uh, seen online, um, which is how I researched when, you know, like the library levy was approved and, uh, in the community and
How far back can you go on the courier?
Uh, I think it's 1864 or 1868, somewhere around.
I think you were born with that.
Yeah, that, that project is, uh, up to date. You can, you can only go back outside of the library building. The 10 years, I think, the last 10 years is not available outside of the library building due to a contract thing with the courier. But if you're in the library, you can scan back to current.
Okay, well, that is the library fund. And so the next one up is Jean, who has also not seen this slide. So just to, uh, prepare everybody for, for that. But I, I will go ahead and just mention a few things. So, uh, one of the things the life, or the cemetery fund, whoops, the cemetery fund did in fiscal year 23 with a negative cash balance, which we're working out in the current fiscal year and then, uh, showing fiscal year 25 being that exact in and exact out, um, with a, uh, transfer in, um, amount, um, from the General Fund totaling 243,000. It'll look different on your sheet because there's some interest that's coming in there too from the perpetual care funds. So that's where it gets to be 260 on here, but it is actually 243,000. And so very much like, uh, with the library, um, there is also a transfer in to support benefits and to support the property, um, and liability and vehicle insurance in this fund as well. And then, uh, Jean, I'll, I'll, I'll run you to move forward with whatever you'd like to present.
Well, um, the cemetery really is operating at a minimum staffing level. We have two maintenance employees. And we have a clerk in the office that we share with the beach. That position is open right now. So I've requested another utility worker. I don't know if that's going to be funny or not. The cemetery used to have a dedicated full-time, uh, superintendent that was there working every day. His name was Richard Marks, but then he retired in 2010. So we've been making it work since then with me as the superintendent and John Hazel was assuming the duties as a foreman. At this time of the year, John and Adam, two full-time utility employees, can't take a vacation because it takes two people to do a burial. Mail over a hundred acres of cemetery to take care of. Is a lot. You have Calvary and the Tomah and, uh, Jewish cemetery. So there's a lot to maintain. Lauren, who is our clerk, is now our accountant and we're looking to replace Lauren. We've done the interviews. It's just a matter of getting that approved by the Civil Service Commission and hiring someone. So we should have that person working by the end of February. But we're all doing our best to make things work at the cemetery. We have a lot of burials every year. And then with the recent snow, the staff was also cast, but we're moving snow from all the roads. So we, we're lucky to have an excellent crew at the cemetery.
You have to share with the beach, you have to share somebody with the secretary.
At halftime.
Clerk in the office.
That's not good either because we have to share Lauren years ago. He was cut to halftime, which isn't real good for our customers there when they only have a halftime person that has made the office.
Hey Jean, on this, um, in the general property taxes, um, we, in the 2024, we have 180,000 budgeted and then our actual for 2023 was 2,000, or was a deficit of 2,152. Yeah, that's, uh, finance stuff, so I can talk about that. So the way that it used to be done prior to FY '23 was that, um, rather than recording all property taxes, all general property taxes coming into the General Fund and then transferring out, it was actually recording some property taxes in the library and some property taxes into the cemetery. And then as we're starting to do reports and things, uh, the auditors are like, well, why doesn't your General Fund property tax total match what you actually levy for? So the easiest way was to transition that to a transfer in and out. And so I'm, I'm not 100% sure why that's negative. But we, we can look into that one and, and see what's there. If there's some additional money that you needed to put back in, um, or what needed to happen.
So how many of you put in work? Two more people?
I've requested one more utility worker.
Does that fill you up or do you need more? Because it sounds like there's quite a load of people can't take vacation.
Well, that would help the maintenance side of things. But at some point, we'd really like to have a clerk in the office that's
To not have to share?
Yeah.
So that somebody can be dedicated to the beach and to the cemetery?
Yes, or at least 30 hours per week like Lauren used to be when I started here.
Good, good, okay.
You still need a clerk in the beach when, in the wintertime?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there traffic over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you run all your perks there?
Well, they have events and stuff over there throughout the winter too.
Yeah.
We're an open winter center.
Yeah, birthday parties, selling beach passes, answering the phone, taking free calls. All that happens at the beach office. That's the perks of our office also.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions about the cemetery fund?
Is that number so big, Jean, because of buying that equipment that did the
I did, uh, do a little bit of analysis for there. So the FY '24 donations are higher. That, uh, BACCO purchase was to be funded with the Maring Trust. And so that is why the, um, year-to-date numbers for donations and contributions are so high. I think was that 300, like 32,000 total or something?
Yeah, about 340,000.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a big number that went into the cemetery fund. And kind of the way to think about this is it was held in an account, uh, that is, uh, basically controlled by the cemetery. And so it wasn't showing up kind of on our, our cash accounts. And then that moved into our cash account where it, it increased more revenue there. But then as you go down to the bottom of the page where you do have your expenditures, yeah, we're looking at an amended budget of 734,000 with 143 of that being, um, related to the BACCO. So not all of the Maring Trust funds have been spent. As we talked about, there would be some of those that would be for the construction of the, um, uh, cemetery new office and maintenance building.
Where does that project stand there? Is that anything, a building project?
Well, so I think what, uh, direction we got from the council tonight was, um, include everything in the budget. It's just a budgetary item moving forward. But then, uh, the real, uh, conversation about what to borrow begins is probably in April or May.
Well, yeah, we've kind of been kicked down the road for 20, 30 years and get to the point where we really need a new office building and wish to have scum die with a minimum, shorthanded. It's just, it's get to the point where something, you're going to get sued for not having, it's not accessible, our building gets in bad shape, that we got to replace it. I'd say we've been fighting this for 20, 30 years. It just seemed like it's about our turn for the cemetery to get their shot at.
It'll be a few more months before you get your shot.
Well, yeah, yeah. It seems like everybody else gets what they want. It seems like we're low on the list of getting
What do we call in for, like, maybe I'm missing, like when you sell a plot? Do we sell, or are they not like, where is that? I can't find it. So it's very locked, so it's, I don't know. Where are your space?
$18,000 projected?
Yeah, because we don't have a lot of money set aside by outside projects. We have money set aside for maintaining the cemetery and we don't have a lot of surplus set aside. Like we've got some donations. We got a donation. So we don't have a lot of pile of money set aside for our building projects.
I, I actually totally understand your frustration.
We're just, yeah, it's just, we've been fighting this for several years and it's just, I've been kicked down the road every year. We just appreciate whatever you can do to help us. We greatly appreciate it.
You have anything you could sell or do sell for perpetual maintenance of a grave?
Well, not really. Well, we have flowers.
We'll talk about the perpetual care funds at a future meeting. So we're kind of keeping things by fund type. And so those will be whatever kind of our final meeting is.
We're looking at any other resources there to raise to donations.
Thank you.
Or all options and, uh,
But the big thing on that is they do have investments and there is, uh, 17,300 in interest that we're estimating comes off of those perpetual care funds and comes into the cemetery fund to help support cemetery operations. So, um, with different interest rates, I haven't had a conversation with Warren recently about what, what that, um, number might be expected to grow to and if, uh, we would be expecting more than that. But, uh, um, I think that's a pretty safe number for right now.
I just appreciate anything you can do to help us. Greatly appreciate anything that you can do to help us. One more note about the cemetery is Shaw Cemetery is privately owned. But if at some point they want the city to take that Shaw Cemetery over, according to Iowa law, we have to do that, which will mean more staff, more equipment and so on at that point.
That can be, that can be memorial on too, couldn't it?
It's possible, yes.
That's what I appreciate right now.
But memorial law is in cities, is that in cities?
Part of it is. Any more revenue?
Right.
That's, with this being supported by General Fund, any added positions means that's more money transferred in from General Funds.
Do they have to, like, just give us some kind of funding to support it?
I think the idea is they're transferring it because they have $0 to continue to operate it.
Right. And in the code of the city's
So the value of the, of the cemetery is zero as far as if we are asked to take it over?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, on to our final fund, um, that is associated with the General Fund. And we have the, the Bridgeview Center Fund, 720, uh, which is, uh, related kind of to the operations, but accounts for very little. It is not doing accounting on the city books for the operations. We, we think through the audit, we have a different way of doing that. We're trying to finalize, um, some of that. So, uh, just to talk very kind of, um, briefly here, uh, we have a transfer in from the General Fund. So that previously included the property tax dollars for the operation and maintenance of a civic center as well as additional money coming in, um, for, uh, just general support. And now in fiscal year 25, that just transfers into, um, 361,000 dollars from the General Fund of just General Fund support. Uh, this, this has the, um, the contractual services and management services, which are the two main costs as well as property insurance. And then as you can see in kind of the, as we go through a year, we might see other things that end up coming out of here. Um, I believe there's a contract negotiation in the next fiscal year as well. So that would be, um, uh, you know, impacting any cost there. And I should say in addition, uh, this, this donation is back from, uh, Bridgeview Center, Inc. to help support the city's contributions, um, towards the management agreement as well. So we started the fiscal year in a negative position on this one. And then, um, uh, one of the things that I was hoping we in the fiscal year in more of a negative position, I did program the, uh, FY '25 transfer to take care of this. But I think I can reprogram the FY '24 transfer to take care of the deficit and then just get our revenues and expenditures to that 426,000, which would be, it's not, it's not saving money. It's just moving $60,000 back to fiscal year 24 out of fiscal year 25. And I think that would be the proper way to do it based on when those, um, existing deficits would, were existing deficit and continuing deficit would continue to be. So that is one adjustment that, uh, um, I'll be making kind of as we move forward. But this one's a fairly simple fund. Not much to it in terms of ins and outs. And so, uh, Phil here would answer any questions that you might have.
Gee, Scott here too, but I mean, so like, stated, the, the primary expenditures for us are, um, under the contract. So we have the operational support and we have the contribution that we pay to VenueWorks to operate, uh, the center for us. I, I can't remember the exact amounts offhand, but it's $6,000 a month or so for 6,500 for, that goes to VenueWorks directly. And then the rest of that, uh, number is, goes to the operations board, which covers utilities, covers building maintenance. So VenueWorks takes care of all of that stuff for, on behalf of the city. And we pay for that as part of it. The rest of it is, uh, as Jessica was saying, when they book an event and those expenses and the, um, cost of concessions and food and labor and all of that, they track all of that on their books. That's not reflected in this budget, um, but it's kind of But it's kind of a, it'll be a different fund that'll reflect that. So we still track the revenues and expenditures there. Bottom line, their goal is to get to zero. Our operational support helps them get to that zero mark. All right?
Do I remember in the last meeting, you made some comment about Bridgeview giving a contribution of some kind towards the projects that you're asking for?
Not on the capital side, not yet. On the operational side, they historically average about 150,000 a year. Last year was 125 because the markets were very low in '22. We're trying to get closer to 150 this year. Hopefully we'll hit 150, maybe 140. Because the markets did perform bad, that comes out of the operational endowment. So there's a capital endowment started. But the board has asked that we do not spend out of that fund, so we hit a million dollar balance. And then we can start to spend a little bit and we're, we're, we're very close to that, but, but we're not quite there yet.
And the idea with this is that, you know, we are looking at where, where are those expenses and revenues coming in at the fiscal, in the fiscal year? So our transfer in is to kind of zero things out. That didn't happen in fiscal year '23. And so that's kind of where we're, we're, we're making up for some of those things that kind of didn't happen in fiscal year '24. And trying to still clean, clean up a few small things. So, um, with that, we still have in terms of fund groups, special revenue, which is I think about 20-some funds, but many of them very quick and easy ones. The perpetual care funds, enterprise funds and internal service funds. I am going to have a conversation with Chris about what our agenda looks like for February 6th.
We're at about four pages right now.
Okay, well then we might not be doing anything too major on February 6th, so
I think there's like four or five public hearings.
Okay.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Love that paper space then.
Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be working, because I realized it's eight o'clock right now and these are, these are long meetings. We don't want to make the council meetings any longer than they have to be either. So we'll be trying to do a little bit of something on February 6th and then come back on February 13th with either the general fund or more of these other funds that we have to cover. And then really hoping to use the February 20th meeting as our last meeting. Because to have everything ready for the March 5th council meeting and in the state forms, that means we have to have everything to crisp by February 29th. So there's not much time kind of in between the 20th and the 29th for us to just get everything into the formats that we need to, to get it into, to be in the state forms and produce the hearing notices and other things that we need to do. So, so hopefully we'll wrap this up on the 20th and it just might mean the 13th would be a longer meeting as well. But more to come.
So there'll be a work session on February 13th?
Yes. I would hope, I was hoping we could get away with not having it, but it looks like we need to. So that concludes what we have for tonight, Mary.
Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica.
If there's no other business to be brought forward, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Musso?
Yes.
Councilmember Millway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes. And we are adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming to tonight's